The hour of 6:30, having come and gone, I'll ask all those to take their seats and others to clear the floor, and I will call to order the Common Council meeting of Tuesday, June 20th, 2023, and ask the clerk to please call the roll. Alder Field.
Here.
Figaroa Cole.
Here.
Govinda Rajan.
Here.
Harrington McKinney.
President here.
Knox. Latimer Burris. That's online. Latimer Burris. All right, I'll come back. Madison.
Here.
Martinez Rutherford.
Here.
Miazze. Rommel.
One minute.
Slack.
Here.
Tischler.
Here.
Verveer.
Here.
Vidiver.
Present.
Wajalia. Bennett. Conklin.
President.
Curry.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
Evers. Alder Latimer Burris, can we get you on the Zoom sound?
Sorry about that, here.
Awesome. Madam Mayor, we have quorum. Thank you. So we have a number of presentations and resolutions today, and so I'll ask for everybody's patience as we go through them and invite all of you to join us in celebrating the many things that we have to celebrate at the top of today's agenda. The first of which, I'm not going to say it's the most exciting, although it's right up there, is item one, Legisstar 78318, the presentation of the 2023 Reverend James C. Wright Human Rights Award by the City of Madison Equal Opportunities Commission and the Department of Civil Rights to Emmanuel Scarborough. And I don't think she needs introduction, but Ms. Corinda Rainey Moore.
Hello, everyone. Can everyone hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It is my honor to present this James C. Wright Award to Emmanuel Scarborough tonight as the Board Chair of the Equal Opportunities Commission. So this is a presentation of the Wright, the James C. Wright Award by the City of Madison Equal Opportunities Commission and the Department of Civil Rights Equal Opportunity Division to Emmanuel Scarborough. The Reverend James C. Wright Award honors the late Reverend James C. Wright, who served as the Executive Director of the Equal Opportunities Commission from his inception in 1968 until his retirement in 1992. The award is given to an individual who best exemplifies Reverend Wright's dedication and compassion for civil and human rights and conducts their daily life consistency with these values. The Equal Opportunities Commission has selected Emmanuel Scarborough as the recipient of the 2020 Award. Emmanuel's volunteer work at the Wilmar Neighborhood Center helped lay the foundation for the Malcolm Shabazz High School, and doing Emmanuel's service as Vice President and President of the Dane County Chapter of the NAACP, he established a program that focused on placing African Americans on the Madison Advisory Boards and Commissions. In 2010, Emmanuel was recognized by Madison Police Department for creating a communication channel to encourage better relationships between the police department and the community. Emmanuel has been, has been a dedicated servant and member of Mount Zion Baptist Church for over 40 years. In 1999, Emmanuel began working with Mount Zion's Genesis Development Corporation to educate youth and parents on the dangers of drugs and alcohol. His work at Genesis led him to become one of the few certified prevention specialists in Wisconsin and to serve on two of the Governor's State Committees addressing substance abuse. His dedication to preventing substance abuse, especially in underserved communities, led to his work with the Dane County Transition School. Emmanuel plays a significant role in the 100 Black Men of Madison's annual Back to School Celebration, helping those who help others, and Christmas for children with responsibilities. Emmanuel serves as a mentor and strong role model for many, many middle and high school students in Madison, and financial literacy is a passion of Emmanuel's, and he chairs the Hands on Banking Program and co-chairs the Stock Market Game to increase middle school and students' financial literacy. Emmanuel Scarborough's life has been a continual example of positively impacting many, many individuals, along with the greater Madison community. His warm, encouraging spirit belies a genuine desire to see others succeed in spite of obstacles. Emmanuel is and has been a dedicated servant to his family, friends, church community, and city ever since he arrived in Madison in 1967. There are simply not enough words to describe how Emmanuel Scarborough positively impacts our community. With this award and for keeping in the tradition of what Reverend Wright stood for in our community, the Equal Opportunities Commission and Department of Civil Rights Equal Opportunities Division would like to honor you, Emmanuel Scarborough, and say thank you for your compassion for helping people and their basic human needs get met. You are a champion in our community, and it is my honor to present you with this award.
Thank you, Corinda. Mayor, city elders, after all that, I can sit down. I don't need to say anything. But people ask me, how did I get involved in community work? It started with my father. My father is the most important and most prestigious person in my life. The 100 Black Men has a mantra. It says, "What they see is what they will be." I think that's worth saying again. What they see is what they will be. I saw it from an early stage with my father volunteering, becoming the youngest elder in the church, being head of the Young People's Program. Like Reverend Wright, he was grounded in the principles and values of the church. The second person that had that influence when I came to Madison was Dr. Oscar Shade. Dr. Oscar Shade was a member of the faculty at the university. I met him, he was also the president of the state NAACP. He said to me, "Emmanuel, why don't you come over and join NAACP?" I did. Eventually, as she said, becoming Vice President, becoming President. You heard that I got an award from the police, but something started long before that. We at the NAACP realized who is most impacted by our community than the police and the justice system. So the officer said, "Let's start a relationship with the police department." So I met with the chief, and he and I decided that we would have regular meetings talking about what affected our community. See, this is something that Dr. Reverend Wright would do. Reverend Wright fought really hard for equal opportunities. Like many young people now don't realize how the opportunities, we have these all the sitting in the community, African Americans, back in the time, back in the 60s, that wasn't possible. Reverend Wright fought that fight. So I'm here and really happy to receive this award, and I'm happy that the city continually gives this award. What they do is that they remind the community of the path that he set to do these kinds of things. That means that this path will be set in perpetuity. So going forward, everybody will be able to see what Reverend Wright did for the City of Madison. Thank you very much.
Thank you and congratulations. I believe we need a motion, President Curry. Moved to adopt? Adopt. Moved and seconded to adopt. Is there discussion? Is there any objection to recording enthusiastic vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record an enthusiastic vote in favor and congratulate you again. Thank you for all of your service to our community. Item two is a presentation from Make Music Madison, and so we will invite our music folks to come up to the mic.
All right. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to present. That's going to be extremely hard to follow, but I will try to do my best. My name is Corey Whitmore. I'm the musician in residence for Make Music Madison, the first ever musician in residence there. A little bit about myself, I'm an owner of Media 22. It's a multimedia company that deals with recording, mixing, and mastering audio and video podcasts, and we also have a digital radio station as well. I have over 15 years of experience in music and media, as a music educator, as a former record label owner, and as a former radio station manager. My position was also made possible by the artists at work. I'm the recipient of the Artists at Work Grant, so I wanted to thank Madison Arts Commission for, for that grant and having the opportunity to be able to serve in this way. Some of my duties at Make Music Madison, I ensure that the Make Music Day is accessible for all performers of all ages, all genres, and all experience levels. I serve as a primary contact for musicians. I'm a liaison between musicians and venues as far as them being able to be booked on the Make Music Day, and I'm there to cultivate relationships with community leaders, donors, artists, and art and culture organizations. I do feel that my unique experience in music and media and as a current studio owner, I've been able to, you know, reach and access a group of artists that have not always been able to participate in past Make Music Days and be able to kind of figure out pathways and ways for them to be able to, this year, be able to participate. A little background on the day, it was launched in 1982 in Paris, France, by Jack Lang, Minister of Culture in France. You know, the purpose is really to celebrate the power and the joy of live music, get folks outside, to be able to have artists at different levels, whether it's just beginning to play, you know, an instrument or just beginning to get into music, to your most experienced musician in bands. It's always free, it's always open to the public, and it's in nearly 120 countries, and 1,100 cities participate in Make Music Day. In Wisconsin, we have 21 different cities participating in Make Music Day. Now, as far as Make Music Madison, this is the 11th year as part of the International Make Music Day. We are one of the founding cities. It was initiated by the City of Madison and the community volunteers to activate neighborhoods through arts. Currently, they, currently, we are a 501(c)(3) with one part-time staff, and as I said before, the day is open to all music makers of all ages, skills, levels, and musical persuasions. Now, as far as the artists, I wanted to update you on some of the numbers from this year. This year, we have over 500 registered performance groups, representing an estimated 1,500 individual artists. So how do we get to 1,500 individual artists? Because some groups or bands will register, but it'll just be under one registration. Many of those groups and bands may have maybe a three-piece, five-piece, 10-piece. So that's why we have the 500 registered performance groups, but individually, we estimate it's going to be close to 1,500 participants. There will be 680 live performances tomorrow, at least as I've checked yesterday. It may have, may have ticked up a few, but that is a 42% increase from last year. Genres will include bluegrass, country, folk, funk, hip-hop, gospel, jazz, indie rock, Latin, punk, R&B, and more. My particular studio, we have a lot of R&B and hip-hop artists to come through the studio. As far as hip-hop is concerned, there has, previously, there was nine performances, and this year, we have 47-plus. So we've really been able to integrate more, thank you, integrate more genres into Make Music Madison this year. From the venue standpoint, from our businesses, from our neighbors, from our communities, we have 217 registered venues. So what does that mean? So it is neighborhoods that's across Madison, but it's businesses, it's community centers, it's libraries, parks, restaurants, sidewalks, and residencies. So we have folks that are hosting some of these concerts at their own house, whether it's in the driveway or the backyard. I wanted to thank you for your time and, and for having the opportunity to do this presentation. I have brought a artist that will be performing at Make Music Madison. Sarah is here to perform live on acoustic guitar. Sarah has performed in the past at Make Music Madison. She has a long list of performances. As I'm looking here, it looks like you'll be in five different places tomorrow. Which, which seems crazy, but we have a lot of artists that are really in multiple spots throughout the day. Sarah is one of them. You know, I have a good friend, Marcus Porter, that's another one that has about five to six different performances throughout the day. Sarah is a singer-songwriter that is passionate about music from an early age, born and raised on a tiny island in the Caribbean. She's influenced by genres like bolero, reggaeton, Latin jazz, and R&B. Sarah loves, love for music materializes in specific groups of songs that she's been performing around Madison for the past year. Some of those will include unreleased singles and covers from artists like Summer Walker, Amy Winehouse, Vincent Garcia, and much more. Today, she will be performing an original song. Did you want to say that?
So thank you very much to our performers, and are there questions for Make Music Madison? Alder Madison?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First, thank you for taking my call yesterday on a holiday, but I just wanted to ask, I'm very, very excited about the 9 to 47, so that, that's really dope, but I do want to ask, would this have happened without the position of the Music in Residence? Like, your real feedback, do you think this could have happened without the grant and you playing in this role?
No, I think the, I think the position was able to, the creation of the position was able to kind of have somebody else to be able to go out into the community and really be that liaison, one, to get feedback from artists for things they're looking for as far as streamlining the process, but really from a recruitment standpoint. There's so many kind of logistical things that have to go on, you know, starting at the beginning of the year to really be able to pull this off and to have this many musicians and artists involved, but that grant funding, being able to have somebody else that can, whether it's be at the radio station doing interviews or sending out press releases or going to different performances leading up there to encourage venues to be a part of this, to encourage other artists to be a part of it, I think was, was crucial, and I think that's, that was really crucial in. in how the numbers had increased this year, especially by 47%.
And then my second and just last question is, so if this went away and this role didn't exist anymore, what do you see happening?
I, I think with the growth, it would be hard to sustain and maintain. I mean, I mean, you need, you need bodies to be able to do the work. And, and you need someone that, one, has a relationship and has that experience in the music community to do it. So I wouldn't say you could plug necessarily anybody in. That's what's great about this position, being a musician in residence. Someone that has already have built-in relationships with venues, with other musicians, to really be able to get them in here and be able to kind of use their eyes and their experience to see what's needed to really try to grow the organization. And that's a lot of what I tried to add in with some of my experiences in, in media, in radio, you know, having a studio and things of that sort, and, and being a music educator.
Then my last question. I think I said the other one was the last one. But because I just, I'd just like for folks to, to share, what would you be able to do with more?
Oh, wow.
What would have happened?
You know, I, I would like, I would like to think that, you know, we definitely would have been over 50%. Because like I said, for, for this to grow, music in general is a relational business. And the more people that you have within the organization that has some of those relationships, that can leverage those, that can pool those, that are familiar with people, the more participation you can get. I use the example of hip-hop because that's something that, hip-hop and R&B is a mainstay in my studio. We do a lot of other things, but that's the majority of it. And I was basically able to leverage those relationships. People are coming into the business, and I'm saying, hey, would you like this opportunity? I had somebody that was looking just to perform this year because they performed in past years. And I said, would you like to host a stage? And they, they were blown away. It was like, what do you mean host, you know, host a stage? You can put together a lineup. We can go and find a park for you to go and perform. I'll be, I'll be running them a P.A. tomorrow morning. Yes, yes. Juicy Monroe. So Juicy Monroe has participated in past Make Music Madisons, and we had a conversation. Just, you know, she was going to go through the same thing. I'm just going to register and try to perform. I said, hey, would you be interested in hosting? As soon as I said that, it just sparked, sparked something in her brain. I said, so here's what we can do. I can help put this together for you as far as the lineup. She, as, as another musician and someone that's been in the scene and established in the scene, she has relationships. She has connections. She was able to put together an eight-hour lineup at Demetral Park tomorrow with over 10 musicians. So bringing somebody else like that into the fold, it's only, it's only going to multiply the numbers.
Thank you. Alder Conklin?
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to make a comment. Hi, Corey. I wish I could be there tonight with you, but I've been knowing Corey Whitmore for a very long time. We have worked together in our past life together. So I just really wanted to commend you, Corey, for all that you're doing. I know the type of person you are, the type of relationships you have within the community. And I just commend you for all the hard work that you're doing. And you're doing a great job. And I just want to say, keep it up. And I look forward to attending some of these festivals. So, great job, Corey.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox?
Yeah, just give you an opportunity to tell us where we can go to know about all these fantastic venues. Okay, before you leave.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I know, but.
So, yeah, so the website, makemusicmadison.org is going to be the best place for you to go. They actually have an interactive map there. So when you go on the map, it has, it has basically little pins for every single performance that's within the city. And when you click on those pins, you'll be able to see a full lineup and the times for musicians performing.
Alder Bennett?
Thank you. This is amazing, so much. I, I wanted to ask specifically, I am really happy that we increased our numbers. But specifically about like the diversity in music. You know, I've said this on the floor, but in Madison in general, we have a problem with diversification of our music. And even when I spoke to some people like that perform hip-hop, the knee-jerk reaction is, people in Madison don't want to hear my music. And so I'm wondering, how did you, how, how were you able to recruit a diversity in music?
You know, I, I think that, you know, like I said before, I think I was able to use and leverage relationships. And being a engineer and kind of a producer, a studio owner, there's a trust factor there. People come in, come in and trust me with their music. So that, that's kind of built in. And I was able to leverage that in this case to say, hey, if you, if you trust me with your music and as far as what you're putting out, as far as singles and albums, I'm not going to put you in a place, put you in a harmful place. And, but I think this is a great opportunity. And I think that from a musician standpoint, promotionally, I think, I think it's great. But from an experience standpoint, for someone that may just be getting into music, they need that real-life experience. Either, you know, in, in my time, there's been real no great replace for, replacement for that. So to be able to get out there, see how people react, see what's working, I think has been great. So for me, I was able to leverage those relationships to really try to diversify more of the folks that were participating this year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. You know, there are Alders in the queues, so thank you very much. And just to make sure that everybody's got it in their brain all day tomorrow.
All day.
Everywhere across the city.
Yes.
Makemusicmadison.com.
Yes, r.org.
Dot org.
Yes.
MakemusicMadison.org. And I hope to see you all out there. There's plenty of downtown opportunities or in probably each of your districts. And if there isn't one in your district, that's an opportunity for next year. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that will take us to item number three, which is Legisstar 78284, recognizing June 2023 as Pride Month. And we will read the resolution and then hear from our recipients. And it's my honor to start the reading of the resolution. Whereas LGBTQ+ Pride was started by the Stonewall Rebellion of 1969, led by Black and Brown LGBTQ+ people. And whereas in 1969, just months after the Stonewall uprising, the Madison Alliance for Homosexual Equality was founded as Wisconsin's first gay rights organization. And whereas in 1973, Judy Greenspan was the first out lesbian in the nation to run for public office when she sought election to the Madison School Board after she and others had been denied the right to speak in Madison high schools. And whereas, the City of Madison in 1975 became the first place in Wisconsin and one of the earliest in the country to ban discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation by amending its Equal Opportunities Ordinance. And?
Whereas Alder Jim Yaden was appointed to the City Council in the fall of 1976 and elected in the spring of 1977 and was the first openly gay man elected to a city council in the United States. And whereas, when the Madison Equal Rights Ordinance came under attack from an anti-gay movement motivated by activist Anita Bryant in 1978, Madison successfully defended its ordinance even though similar anti-discrimination ordinances were repealed in cities like St. Paul, Minnesota, and Eugene, Oregon. And whereas, in 1982, Madison State Representative David Clarembach skillfully led the fight to pass a first-in-the-nation state gay rights law, which was signed by Republican Governor Lee Sherman-Draffus. And whereas, the Fifth Annual Conference of Gay and Lesbian Officials was hosted in Madison in 1989 at the state Capitol with a local host committee chaired by Dane County Supervisors Dick Wagner and Tammy Baldwin. And?
Whereas, Black and Brown LGBTQ+ people have been leaders in advancing social change, creating and shifting culture. And whereas, Ricardo Gonzalez was the first openly gay Latino ele, official elected to public office in the United States when he was elected to Madison City Council in 1989. And whereas, the city created the state's first domestic partnership registry in 1990 by ordinance, affording limited rights to same-sex couples. And whereas, in 2000, the city became the first place in Wisconsin to prohibit discrimination on the basis of gender identity by amending the Equal Opportunities Ordinance. And?
Whereas, Dane County Supervisor Tammy Baldwin became the first openly LGBTQ+ member of the Wisconsin State Assembly in 1993. And then the first openly LGBTQ+ non-incumbent elected to the U.S. House of Representatives in 1998. And became the first out LGBTQ+ U.S. Senator in our nation's history in 2013. And whereas, Dane County Supervisor Mark Pocan became the first openly gay man to be elected to the State Assembly in 1998. And became the first openly gay non-incumbent married man to be elected to the United States Congress in 2022. And where GSafe has worked since 1991 to create just schools for LGBTQ+ youth in Wisconsin by developing the leadership of LGBTQ+ youth, supporting gay straight alliances, training educators, advancing educational justice, and deepening racial, gender, trans, and social justice. And whereas, Fair Wisconsin was founded in 1994 to protect and advance the civil rights of LGBTQ+ people through electoral involvement and direct legislative advocacy. And has since worked to build a fair, safe, and inclusive Wisconsin for all LGBTQ+ people by advancing, achieving, and protecting LGBTQ+ civil rights through legislative advocacy, grassroots organizing, coalition building, and electoral involvement. And?
Whereas, Outreach LGBTQ+ Community Center was founded in 1998 with the merger of the United Madison Gay and Lesbian Resource Center and continues its mission of commitment to equity and quality of life for all LGBTQ+ people through community building, health and human services, and economic, social, and racial justice advocacy. And whereas, Freedom, Inc., created in 2003, is Madison's first nonprofit with a focus and mission on ending violence against Black and Southeast Asian LGBTQ+ and fighting for their rights, dignity, and wellness. And whereas, Alianza Latina, or now known as Orgujo Latinx, has been working since 2007 to build a just place for Latinx LGBTQ+ community in Dane County. And whereas, in 2015, Wisconsin-born retired U.S. Army Colonel and transgender advocate Sherry Swakowski, the highest-ranking transgender veteran, was the first woman to legitimately wear a U.S. Army infantry uniform. Swakowski is also the first person to have been granted official change-of-gender marker on their military record. And?
Whereas, Satya Rhodes Conway was elected the City of Madison's first openly lesbian mayor on April 2, 2019. And the City of Madison has a proud history of protecting LGBTQ+ rights and advancing LGBTQ+ equality. And whereas, Madison activist, historian, and county board supervisor, Dick Wagner, published many important articles and analysis about the unique history of the LGBTQ+ community in Wisconsin, culminating with a two-volume book on Wisconsin LGBTQ+ history. The city mourned his passing on December 13, 2021. And whereas, Mayor Satya Rhodes Conway raised the rainbow pride flag over Madison for the first time on June 3, 2019, and lit the Madison Municipal Building in rainbow colors. And Governor Tony Evers raised the rainbow pride flag for the first time over every state office building in Wisconsin on June 7, 2019. And in June 2023, both officials conducted Progress Pride and Trans Pride flag raisings. And whereas, the group of Madison Common Council members elected in 2023 is the most diverse yet, with more than a quarter of Alder districts represented by LGBTQ+ Alders, including Dina Nina Martinez-Rutherford as the first openly transgender elected official in Madison.
And whereas, our LGBTQ+ youth, especially transgender youth, have bravely faced discrimination in Wisconsin communities and schools and organizations to fight back against discriminatory, unconstitutional, partisan attacks in the Wisconsin Legislature in an effort to divide and distract our communities from real problems we face. And Wisconsin LGBTQ Policy Advocacy Coalition has been organizing, challenging, lobbying, and testifying against the anti-transgender bills that have been introduced in recent legislative sessions. And whereas, for the first time in Human Rights Campaign in, in, for the first time, the Human Rights Campaign in June 2023 declared the state, a state of an emergency for LGBTQ+ people in the United States for the first time following an unprecedented and dangerous spike in anti-LGBTQ+ legislative assaults. With 75 such bills signed into law so far in 2023 and more than doubling the number last year, which was previously the worst year on record. And whereas, the City of Madison recognizes the LGBTQ+ community as an important part of the diversity of the greater Madison community and appreciates their contributions to our economy, culture, neighborhoods, and city. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Madison declares June 2023 as Pride Month in the City of Madison.
Thank you, Alders. We're going to take that as moved by Alder Martinez-Rutherford and seconded by Alder Vervier. And we do have folks here to receive the proclamation. We will start with Tara Strangler and then go to Brian Eucombs and then Maggie McDonnell. Do you have Tara?
Just for the record, my name is Tara Strangler.
Sorry.
It's fine. So we're coming from Outreach. Thank you for recognizing this month as Pride Month. Outreach is thrilled that Madison is a place that is demonstrating a want to celebrate the history, especially the BIPOC history and lives of LGBTQIA+ people. However, the act of having to recognize or proclaim it as such is a sign that we still have a lot of work to do together. As an organization that works to support LGBTQIA+ folks across the county, we can confidently say that there is much more support that is needed for the queer community as a whole. No proclamation alone can ensure the safety of our community. We must work together to ensure the LGBTQIA+ folks never have to worry about holding hands in public, about dressing the way they want, about using the bathroom that matches their identity. We have to do a lot more than just say things with words. We have to follow it through with actions that stretch beyond visual representations. We must show LGBTQIA+ folks that Madison is a welcoming and supportive place for them to be by helping fund resources that support them, by creating policies that they have, or that ensure they have ways to achieve justice when they are wronged, and by standing next to them during the onslaught of discriminatory and hateful rhetoric that we see constantly. We thank you for taking this step to make Madison a welcoming and affirming place for our community. But please don't let this be the last thing or the only thing you do this month to support our community members.
Hang on. Tara? Sorry? We have a presentation and photos.
Oh, we get photos.
We'll do each one.
Oh, okay.
So I should sit down as well?
No, 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 no. Everybody gets their flowers.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Brian?
Sorry, I'm a little bit older and my eyes aren't as good at reading phones. So I've got a, a computer with me. So, and I'd like to invite my friend Rainbow to stand with me if you'd like to do that. So, hi, Rainbow. Good to see you. So, so thank you, Mayor and Common Council Alders. My name's Brian J. or Brian Eucombs. My pronouns are he/him. And on behalf of the GSafe team over here, they're beautiful. I'm here to cheer you on and thank you in advance for passing the Pride Month resolution in front of you tonight. With our roots going back to 1991, we work with students, educators, families, and community leaders to create safe and affirming- leaders to create safe and affirming schools for trans and queer youth. We often talk with educators about the developmental stages of LGBTQ identity, and not to do a lesson plan, but a common stage across different models is pride, which often follows tentative and then more assured coming out to close friends, family, and then often the larger world. For those of you who are part of the LGBTQ-plus community, or those of you who might know someone who is LGBTQ+, you might recognize this stage as the all-gay or all-trans 100% of the time stage. For students, it becomes every homework assignment, every classroom discussion, every piece of clothing and color of hair, and every pride flag draped like a cape across confident shoulders. I lovingly refer to this stage as the insufferable gay stage. Because for folks who aren't part of the community, it seems like we've become lost in our own identities. But in reality, we go through this stage because so many of us lost so many opportunities to discover and share those important parts of our identities at the same time as our straight and cisgender peers. We didn't get to express our first crush or our first awareness of being a boy, girl, both, or neither. We often had to lose our true selves in order to stay safe, avoid bullying and harm, and have a bed and safe shelter each evening. All that loss builds up, and when we finally get to share that with the world, the expression is often big, it's often bold, it's often beautiful, and yes, sometimes it's insufferable. Most of us usually move past this one-person pride parade stage, and while that doesn't mean we forget about our pride or put away our rainbows, we nevertheless find these pieces of ourselves becoming more integrated into our today lives. But lately, as you know, it's been incredibly hard for us to see our queer and trans identities as just another part of who we are. Those of us, there are those in our community, state, and country who don't get it. It's becoming extremely less safe to be who we are boldly and without apology, even here in Madison. The hate and the vitriol is real, as witnessed here in this very room last Thursday night during the Dane County Board of Directors meeting, and oftentimes just up the street at our Capitol over the last several sessions. We're constantly reminded of who we are and how vulnerable we are in our marginalized identities, especially those of us who are trans and/or folks of color. We want to move forward, but those who fear us and hate us are digging in and refusing to budge. So pride is also an act of resistance, a rejection of those who seek to reject us. By declaring this proclamation tonight and sharing it with the broader community, you are resisting that hate and that vitriol. You are affirming those of us who are most vulnerable, including Madison-area students still finding the courage to let their true selves shine through. You proclaim tonight that all of us belong here in Madison, and that you stand with us as we work to march forward together. And for that, I thank you, and the G-Safe team thank you. Thanks you. Thank you so much. G-Safe team, come on down.
You gotta open this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Megan?
Hello, my name is Megan McDonnell. She/her, I'm the Executive Director of Fair Wisconsin, and just speaking on behalf of myself as a resident of Madison for 32 years and mom of a trans teen. Thank you all for advancing this resolution to recognize LGBTQ Pride Month and all of the historic contributions of those who came before us, and thank you for including Fair Wisconsin in this recognition. My friends at Outreach and G-Safe said it better than I have anything to add, as well as the resolution that I was really proud to listen to and realize I was a part of a lot of those things. So I'm just really grateful and proud of that, and I will... So I'll keep my comments to this expression of gratitude and appreciation to the city of Madison. I second the sentiments about ongoing, you know, resistance and all the work to be done, and thank you.
Thank you. Great, great. We've got one for you, too. Right. Thank you to all of our recipients. Right, so it has been moved and seconded, and I would like to suggest that we record a unanimous vote in favor in honor of Dick Wagner. Seeing no objection, we'll record that unanimous vote in favor, and we will move on to item number four. We're getting there, folks. Which is Legisstar 78328, recognizing June 24, 2023 as Capitol City Hughes Day. And for this, I will turn to Alder Harrington-McKinney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas the city of Madison recognizes its diversity as one of its greatest strengths and appreciates the culture and contribution of our various communities of color, all of whom add to the greatness of our city. And whereas, the Capitol City Hughes was founded in 2006 as a multicultural newspaper owned, written, and read by people of color and people in the Madison area interested in race relations and multiculturalism. And whereas, the Capitol City Hughes celebrates Madison's diversity and gives a positive voice to people who may not be adequately represented in mainstream media. And whereas, the Capitol City Hughes is dedicated to helping the Madison area evolve into a more cosmopolitan community where all people are free socially, politically, and culturally to pursue life, liberty, and happiness. And whereas, the Capitol City Hughes is celebrating its 17th-year anniversary with the Hughes 17th Anniversary Celebration, celebrating our cultures together on the grounds of the Madison Labor Temple on Saturday, June 24, 2023. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the common council hereby recognize June 24, 2023 as the Capitol City Hughes Day. Be it further resolved that the mayor and common council congratulate the communities of color represented in the Capitol City Hughes and their significant contributions to the city of Madison and its high quality of life.
Thank you, Alder. We're going to take that as moved by Alder Harrington-McKinney and seconded by Alder Curry. And we do have one registrant wishing to speak, Larry Hillier. Do we have Larry? Not seeing Larry in the room.
It looks like we do not have a Larry with us in Zoom.
Great, thank you. So then we'll go to the recipient of the resolution, Jonathan Gramley.
So, back in June of 2006, there was 11 of us who founded the Capitol City Hughes. And these are three who were there in the beginning in 2006. Mayor Francis Huntley-Cooper, the first African-American elected mayor in the state of Wisconsin's history, Enid Glenn and Ty Glenn. We also counted the late Lamar Billups, who many of you might have remembered. He was very instrumental in Madison politics back in the '90s and in the early 2000s. And it's hard to think in this way, but the late Juan Jose Lopez was also one of our founding partners. As the resolution said, pretty much what we were about. Two of the important things, the way that we got there, well, first of all, I was the editor of the Madison Times back in the late '90s and early 2000s, and we hired Leo Iribar, who worked for the school district and is a muralist, who has many of his murals throughout the Madison Public Schools, to teach me Spanish, because we really wanted to have a Spanish edition. Well, that part of me never really developed, so what did we talk about? We talked about art and politics during that time when he was hired to teach me Spanish. And one of the most important things that he taught me was that art is revolution. Art tells us who we can be more than just describing what we are today. And I really kind of kept to that premise in terms of expressing the diversity of what Madison can be, not by doing some kind of abstract thing, but by just telling the tales of everyday Madisonians, people who have really striven to make Madison a different place, a better place for all of us. And by all those stories over the years, I feel like we've had our own little impact on Madison. I see over the last 17 years how the community has changed, how people have more opportunity. That doesn't mean the microaggressions and the racism disappeared, but that there is progress. And I'd like to say that we did our own little part in that, because we've, you know, you got to know your role in social change. You don't do it yourself, that you're a part of a movement. And so it was always important to understand that you're part of a movement, that you're working with people, other people, and together through your collective moments. And things that you do is how the community changes. And it also then, volunteering is revolution for me, too. And I know younger people don't like to volunteer as much as we do, but it's like the way things are happened between 9:00 and 5:00, and it's the time after that is when the real change happens. And so through volunteerism, I've worked on many political campaigns, other things, other Adelante, a lot of different organizations, again, to help promote that change as an individual. One other thing that was important was not to helicopter in, like sometimes a lot of media does, they'll helicopter into a community, get, grab their story, and then they'll helicopter out, and you don't see them again until they do another story. That it was important for the Capitol City Hughes to be engaged in the communities, to volunteer in the communities, and that's what created the context of the Capitol City Hughes. Yes, we do reporting like anyone else, but it's the context that we normally get right. It's because of that engagement in the different communities of color, understanding the trends, understanding the people, and that's what has really sustained us over 17 years. We write not, we did not intend for me to tell everyone who everyone is, or to really exert our power over people because we're a member of the media. It was more important to bring people's voices out, so that when you read the Hughes, you'll see I use a lot of quotations, because I want everybody's voice, all the different and diverse voices from all the different communities to come out through the newspaper. And over time, it belies all the ignorance and racism stereotypes that exist in society. And I feel that we are an instrument of the truth, but we work with community, and that's what makes us good. So, thank you, Mayor, and Common Council members for this honor. We really appreciate it. I wish I could say I'd see at our 34th one, I don't know if I'll be around then, but it's been a great ride. I'm the luckiest person in the world, that I, in terms of the people I've seen, the people whose lives have influenced me, the strains of thought, everything that I've been engaged in over the last 17 years, really 25 years with the Madison Times. I don't, I'm not rich, but I'm a very wealthy person. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you for being here. Right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record that unanimous vote in favor. And that will bring us to item five, which is Legisstar 78421, recognizing, honoring, and commemorating the life and legacy of Juan Jose Lopez. I believe Alder Latimer-Burrus? Are we turning to you, or Alder Miate? Are you going first?
Sure. All right, thank you, Mayor. It's my honor to read this resolution. Whereas Juan Jose Lopez was born in San Antonio, Texas on May 31, 1959, and passed away on June 6, 2023, at the age of 64 in Madison, Wisconsin. And whereas, Juan Jose came to Madison in 1977 as a University of Wisconsin/Madison freshman and graduated with a Bachelor of Arts degree in social work. And whereas, over the course of his career, Juan Jose served as Executive Director of Briar Patch, Inc., Executive Director of Boys and Girls Club of Dane County, Director of Public Policy and Internal Relations for the Wisconsin Latino Chamber of Commerce, aide to Wisconsin Governor Anthony S. Earl, Policy and Planning Analyst for the Office of Attorney General Peggy A. Lanzhuler, and the Section Chief of Bureau of Job Service and Division of Employment and Training of the Wisconsin Department of Workforce Development. And whereas...
Whereas Juan Jose served on countless community organization boards, including the Latino Academy of Workforce Development, the Kids Fund, the Kids Fund's Youth Development Committee, One City Schools Foundation, Nastro Mundo Community School, the Latino Professional Association of Greater Madison, the Latino Support Network, the Board of Directors of the United Migrant Opportunity Services, the Latino Chamber of Commerce of Dane County, and the Wisconsin Latino Chamber of Commerce. He served as president or chair on many of the boards and was a founding member of several of the organizations. And whereas Juan Jose co-founded Adelante Madison, an organization that is centered on recruiting and training diverse candidates to run in local elections. And...
Is it, or you'll need to just pick it up for me?
Okay. Whereas Juan Jose served as a mentor for many Latina and Latino professionals. And whereas Juan Jose was elected to the first three consecutive terms on the Madison School Board in 1994, becoming the board's first Latino member and serving a total of 12 years. And whereas, during his tenure on the Madison School Board, Juan Jose championed many difficult issues, including hiring more teachers of color, advocating for dual-language instruction, and pushing for alternative programs for students needing additional support and encouragement. And whereas Juan Jose was a longtime and passionate activist, not only for the Latino community, but also for the Hmong and Black communities. And whereas Juan Jose held a special place in his heart for youth, and he dedicated his life to advocating not only for Latinx students, but also for those students who are LGBTQ+ homeless, poor, and have disabilities. And whereas Juan Jose will always be remembered for his devotion to advancing the rights and well-being of Latinos in the Madison community, his un-faithful honesty, and his ability to build community with everyone around him. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and common council recognize, honor, and commemorate the life and the legacy of Juan Jose Lopez.
Thank you, Alders. We have a few people wishing to speak. We'll start with Gloria Reyes.
Thank you. Thank you so much. On behalf of the Latino Chamber of Commerce, on behalf of the Latino Consortium for Action, on behalf of Adelante Political Action Group, we want to thank you for honoring the life of... of Juan Jose Lopez, who meant so much to many of us in our community. And, is Karen here? I want to thank Najra Wihili, who reached out to us and said she wanted to write something. And so I appreciate her leadership. I appreciate all of you signing on to this resolution. I did speak to Juan Jose's brother, who since, he was just, had immense gratitude when he found out that the city council was going to honor his brother. He wished he could be here. He's already back in Texas, they left last week, and his sister is back in Florida. You know, since the passing of Juan Jose, we've read social media posts, we've heard testimonials at the funeral about how he touched the lives of people in our community. And the consistent theme that we've heard was that he was a mentor, he was a friend, he was an advocate, while also getting on our dang nerves, right? I mean, I think many of you who had contact with Juan, you know, he was sweet and sour, right? And, you know, I think that Juan, I remember, just before, leading up to the funeral, I was contacted by people on social media on Facebook, who said, you know, I want to know when the funeral is, asking questions about what's going to happen to Juan. And they kept identifying themselves as one of Juan's kids. And I'm like, you know, Juan didn't have any kids. And so, but, you know, although he didn't have, he didn't have kids of his own, he was like a father to so many of us, right? So many of us standing here today. He was a mentor, he was like a father to many of us, he was like my uncle. And so, as Maya Angelou says, that, quote, "If you're going to live, leave a legacy. Make a mark on the world that can't be erased." And Juan certainly left his legacy through each and every one of us, whose life he's touched, leaving his mark on the world for generations to come. One of the last things his brother told me was that Juan was able to take us up until this point, right? And now it is up to us to move us to this next phase, and to continue to push the needs of our Latinx communities and our most vulnerable communities. And so, if you, if I'm up here ever and I'm saying something, I'm yelling at you, just know that that's Juan's legacy that's coming out. So, thank you again. I don't know if anybody else wishes to speak, or if anybody registered. Thank you.
Do a picture first, and then Justice. Justice Castaneda, do you want to speak? No? I don't see Christian Alboras in the room, is he on the Zoom?
But Mayor, I'll say no.
All right, I knew you wouldn't. I knew you wouldn't pass up the chance, Justice. Please.
Obviously, I'm honored to be here with the group to represent Juan Jose, and I'm humbled by the resolution by the Alders who read it. Juan was unapologetically Chicano. And as a kid, when we grew up, seeing someone like that, it meant a lot. So I'll just say this one time, is what are we doing for our Latina students? What are we doing for our Latina youth? And I'll just leave that there, because that was the question, unapologetically Chicano, unapologetically Latina. When he came into every space, he said that, he asked for it, he advocated for it. So I hope that we carry it forward, in terms of all the work that we do, that it doesn't end at proclamation. So, thank you, Juan.
I'll just note that former Alder Christian Alboras is registered in support as well. And Alder Harrington McKinney?
That was going to be my comment. He wanted to make sure that it was noted that he was registered in support. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer Burris?
Yes, and I'm sorry about the confusion there. You know, it's hard to network from a distance, but I was reaching into my purse that I have here, and I pulled some... Mr. Lopez, on the night that he, that I found out that he had passed, and I, my notes say this. Well, first of all, I want to say something else before I talk about my notes, real fast. His legacy is cemented. And the reason it's cemented is, on the day of his services, I was sitting at my son's graduation, and they were talking about the dual language program, and that these kids not only graduated, you know, speaking dual language, but 79% of those kids made honor roll. Now that's closing the gap. So, Mr. Lopez was, to many people, as frustrating as he was compassionate, because he created a standard that wasn't lip service, that wasn't a photo op, that didn't have to do with legacy, or because he cared what else people thought. He did it because he knew we could do better. So I want to say that his criticism at any time was a compliment. If he bothered to criticize you, he's complimenting you, because he knows that you can do better. And he is someone that could check anybody, anybody. And the thing that was most incredible is that, there's a lot of people that want to go around checking people, and most of the time, most of us don't care. But with Mr. Lopez, you were thinking, okay, I can do better, or I can do differently. So, I remember one time talking to him, and he was talking about a woman named Jessica that I've only met a couple of times, and now she's on the U.S. top level in the Department of Commerce. And he said, "Amani, that, that is the standard." That's it.
Thank you, Alder. So, well, I neglected to do this after the reading, but we'll take this as moved by Alder Miazze and seconded by Alder Knox, without objection. And without objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor. Seeing no objection, we'll record that vote. Thank you all for being here to honor Juan Jose. Okay. Now it's time for disclosures and recusals. Are there any disclosures or recusals on items on today's agenda, Alder Viderver?
Item 47, I'm an employee of the Department of Health Services, Division of Public Health, and had no role in the awarding of this grant to the city.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Yes, Madam Mayor, on item number 875151, I need to recuse myself, because I served on the Board of Directors for that organization.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Field?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 81, I am an employee of the University of Wisconsin-Madison, and that will not impact my vote on that item.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any additional, Alder Tischler?
Same, I'm also an employee of the University of Wisconsin-Madison.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any additional, Alder Slack?
I guess I better say that, too. I'm an employee of the University of Wisconsin-Madison. That won't affect my vote.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any additional disclosures or recusals on items on today's agenda? Seeing none. Our next item, item 6, is a confirmation hearing. Legis 77858, is my distinct pleasure to submit to you the appointment of Thomas W. Lynch for confirmation of an additional five-year term as the Director of Transportation. President Curry, motion to confirm, please. Move to confirm? Moved and seconded to confirm. Are there questions for Director Lynch? Or is there discussion? Seeing neither of those, is there any objection to recording an enthusiastic unanimous vote in favor of confirmation? Seeing no objection, congratulations, Tom, and thank you. Quick, get him to sign the contract. All right, now we are to the consent agenda, and I'll turn it over to you, President Curry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A consent agenda is moved with the recommended action listed for each item on the agenda, including public hearings, except, one, items which have registrants wishing to speak, two, items which Alders have separated out for discussion debate purposes. This document lists agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda, items for exclusion, and items introduced from the floor. Agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda, agenda item 16, Legislative File Number 78333, declaring the city of Madison to be a sanctuary for trans and non-binary Recommended action is to adopt the substitute from Alder Martinez Rutherford. Agenda item 84, Legislative File Number 78341, authorizing the implementation of the body-worn camera pilot program. Introduced, or introduction of new business for referral without debate from myself, and to correct dates of referrals to the civilian oversight board of June 22nd and Common Council of August 1st. Agenda items excluded by request of Alders or speakers registered by 6:30 on June 20th. Agenda item 8, Legislative File Number 75151, the substitute creating section 28.02200604 of the Madison General Ordinances to assign permanent zoning of property located at 1115 South High Point Road in the 20th Aldermanic District to suburban residential, varied two districts. Speakers are registered. Agenda item number nine, Legislative File 77208, the substitute creating section 28.02200628 of the Madison General Ordinances to change zoning of properties located at 737 through 437 through 445 West Johnson Street, 430 through 440 West Dayton Street, and 215 through 221 North Basset Street in the 4th Aldermanic District, from planned development to downtown residential two districts to urban mixed-use district. Speakers registered. Agenda item 16, Legislative File Number 78333, declaring the city of Madison to be a sanctuary for trans and non-binary individuals. Speakers registered. Agenda item 49, Legislative File Number 76903, approving a certified survey map of property owned by Core Madison Basset, located at 437 through 445 West Johnson, 430 through 44 West Dayton, and 215 to 221 North Basset Street in the 4th Aldermanic District. Speakers registered. Agenda item 69, Legislative File Number 78172, substitute supporting and approving the city of Madison's application to the U.S. Department of Transportation by the Vision Zero Team for Safe Streets and Roads for all implementation grants, accepting the grant and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a grant agreement with U.S. dot, or its designee if awarded the grant. Exclusion requested by Alder Slack. Agenda item 84, Legislative File Number 78341, authorizing the implementation of the body-worn camera pilot program. Exclusions request, exclusion requested by Alders Govindarajan and Field for the purpose of adding a referral.
All right, are there any additional items that Alders wish to have excluded from the consent agenda? Alder Knox?
Item 18?
Item 18?
37?
Item 37?
39?
Item 39?
And 43.
And item 43. Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett?
When it's appropriate, like to add itself as a sponsor.
Go ahead, Alder.
Okay, to, agenda item 16, Legis 78333. I didn't know that we had to add ourselves personally as sponsors, so I recommend any other Alder that wants to be added as a sponsor to making Madison a sanctuary city to do that.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Miazze?
Yes, can you add me to number 16, 78333, also number 18, 78148? Items, number 47, 78152, and number 69, 78172, and 39 as well, 78111. Thank you.
Just making sure the clerk got all of those, you'll be added as a sponsor on all of those. Alder Madison?
Thanks, Mayor. I'd just like to be added as a co-sponsor for 37 and, or items 37 and 39.
Clerk will add you, Alder Knox.
Add as a sponsor to 16.
We'll add Alder Knox as a sponsor to item 16. Alder Harrington McKinney?
I would like to be added as a sponsor for 84, Legislative File Number 78341.
Thank you, Alder. We'll add you to that item. Are there any additional requests for exclusions from the consent agenda or sponsorships? President Curry?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just as a point of clarification, for agenda item 84, should I note which committee has been requested for referral and the date that...
It's, it will be separated, so we'll talk about it when we make that motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional items for exclusion? Alder Latimer Burris?
I just wanted to add myself on to a couple of them, you know, specifically 78333, but I'll just communicate those with Karen. Yes, so...
Thank you. Karen is giving you a thumbs up on that. Alders can communicate directly with the clerk or with Karen if you wish to be added as sponsors. Seeing no additional exclusions, let's go over that list one more time, just to make sure. Excluded from the consent agenda are items 8, 9, 16, 18, 37, 39, 43, 49, 69, and 84. One more time? One more time. Excluded from the consent agenda are items 8, 9, 16, 18, 37, 39, 43, 49, 69, and 84. Okay. President Curry, a motion?
Move to adopt consent agenda.
Moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. Are there any questions? Is there any discussion? Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda? Seeing no objection, that vote will be recorded. And our first item, then, is to go on to public comment. And let me just refresh to make sure. So the first item we have public comment on is agenda item number 8. This is the substitute creating sections of the Madison General Ordinances to assign permanent zoning at 1115 South High Point Road in the 20th Aldermanic District. First registrant is Kevin Bur... First registrant is Kevin Burrow of Middleton, representing Knothian Bruce Architects, to be followed by Karen Kraus, to be followed by Paula Reeve. Do we have Kevin?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kevin Burrow with Knothian Bruce Architects. I have the privilege of working with Hope and the Future for this proposed development. What I'd like to do is just give you a very brief overview of what this development entails. Heather Bailey, I'm sorry, Heather Stoudt has some slides available for me if those could be presented.
Give us a moment on the technical side.
Heather, you should be able to screen share. Maybe stop and start again. There we go.
All right. Thank you very much. The property in question is shown on the screen in front of you, highlighted in yellow. What used to be an island of the town of Middleton has been annexed into the City of Madison. You approved that back in March. Thank you very much for that. We are before you tonight to address the rezoning for this property specifically. If you go to the next slide, please. What we have proposed before you is, in addition to this adult family home, which we are providing an additional 19 housing units for this property. It will be a very urban-scale or rural-scale, two-story structure constructed to the east of the existing facility, wrapping around the existing outdoor pool, which serves as a therapy pool for the senior residents. This is a very unique structure, and that'll be explained by the next presenter, but in regards to the use of the space, there's 14 apartments set aside for senior residents, and then we have four additional apartments for multifamily, for families with young children. So it's truly an intergenerational housing development. If you go to the next slide, please. As you can see by the design, we really want to blend into the character of this residential neighborhood. It is a simple two-story building. The existing home is shown on the right, the proposed addition is to the left. We have a drop-off area shown in front, access to the existing garage, and access to underground parking, so all residents that live here will have secure, safe underground parking. If you go to the next slide, please. You can see the outdoor patio space that we've created. There will be daycare facilities on the property, toddler or youth daycare, and then also adult daycare. So both programs will be provided for the residents and for the immediate neighborhood, should capacity be provided. Next slide, please. Here's a view from the backside, where you can see the existing home on the left this time, and our proposed addition to the right. You can get a glimpse of that outdoor patio area. Again, we're doing our best to try and just blend in this simple two-story addition. Next slide, please. And here's the overall site context. I believe it's a little hard to read here, but it really blends in well to the existing property. We've located this immediately adjacent to the existing adult family home, so that we can have handicap accessibility at the elevation where you have drop-off area. The site does have tremendous slope to the south, so should it be located anywhere else on the property, it would not be as handicap accessible. And we have located it over 115 feet away from any immediate neighbors to the east, and just under 60 feet to any immediate neighbors to the north. Again, just trying to blend in as best as possible. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Karen Kraus of District 20, and representing Hope and the Future, to be followed by Paula Reeve, to be followed by Simon Neville.
Hi, I'm Karen Kraus, founder and executive director of Hope and the Future. For the past 20 years, we've been working with the community, UW, and government representatives to create a new kind of neighborhood. Next slide. Our inclusive and vibrant model empowers older adults and families with the opportunity to help each other flourish. Our first-of-its-kind neighborhood model has received national attention and offers Madison and the UW a unique opportunity to become leaders in intergenerational work. The sustainable and replicable model offers 55-plus living and a new kind of cost-effective continuum of care, and it incorporates workforce housing and affordable daycare for young and old. These are services needed in our community and around the country. Next slide. The ideas for our model came out of my life and professional experience. I started life in a small town in Wisconsin where neighbors looked out for each other. When I was eight and my father suddenly died, I benefited from our neighborhood's safety net. A neighborhood grandmother, who is someone everyone calls Grandma but no one's related to, made sure that I never went home to an empty house. The result was that despite the upheaval in my family, I continued to flourish. We later moved, and I became a latchkey kid, where loneliness and anxiety were painful results, and my school functioning suffered. In time, my life improved. However, when I was a teenager, my neighborhood grandmother was placed in a nursing home. There, I questioned how we care for frail elders. She was referred to as 22, which was her room number, and ignored when she spoke. She had become invisible. This remains a reality for many people in long-term care facilities that are understaffed. I wanted to do something about this, so I became a nurse, thinking that if I better understood people's needs, I would be in a better place to consider options. As a nursing supervisor, I often worked with single parents unable to afford childcare. One night, I learned that a staff member had three children in a running car in the parking lot, two so young they were in diapers. After work, I sat thinking and praying about the frightened children, the stressed mother, and then many seniors who endured endless, empty hours, asking me why I thought they were still alive and wasn't there anything they could do to help someone. I knew firsthand that young and old could help each other. Suddenly, I imagined my former neighborhood upgraded to include simple services for children and frail seniors, along with a system for organizing helpful neighbors. Next slide. This is what we are working to create at Hope and the Future. Our first phase includes an intergenerational adult family home. It opened 10 years ago, and we received a Best of Madison in 2018, and are nominated annually. Hundreds of volunteers come each year. Our expansion will complete our model, and plans include mission-driven architecture that allows for accessibility to indoor and outdoor spaces. Our programs are also open to the surrounding community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next registrant is Paula Reeve, District 14, representing Hope and the Future, to be followed by Simon Neville, to be followed by Mark Barnard.
Hi, I'm Paula Reeve, co-founder and vice president of the Board at Hope and Future. Thank you for welcoming the first-of-its-kind neighborhood to Madison. Intergenerational connections and mutual support are the mission and vision of Hope and the Future. In a May 3, 2023 report, the U.S. Surgeon General, Dr. Morthee, highlighted the devastating impact of loneliness and social isolation. Referring to the public health crisis, Morthee presented a framework for a national strategy to advance social connection, detailing recommendations for increased connection. Quoting Dr. Morthee, "Our relationships are a source of healing and well-being hiding in plain sight, one that can help us live healthier, more fulfilled, and more productive lives. Relationships and social connections are key factors to addressing the loneliness epidemic that we face." For the past 20 years, Hope and the Future has created a solution to address this deep loneliness and disconnect. In our first phase, we developed the award-winning adult family home that Karen just spoke of, where we involve multiple generations in the care of adults in their last stage of life. We use a family-of-friends staffing model. Staff, children, and residents share meals and life around a family table. Visitors, regular volunteers, and loved ones become our extended family and friends. No one feels invisible. Care and relationships help young and old flourish. We hope to be a resource and a part of the solution for our neighborhood and for the greater Madison community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Simon Neville of District 20, to be followed by Mark Barnard, to be followed by Carrie Sanders. Do we have Simon?
Looks like we do not have Simon in the queue.
Great, then, Mark Barnard, Fitchburg, representing Hope and the Future, to be followed by Carrie Sanders, to be followed by Kyle Judd.
Thank you very much. My name is Mark Barnard. I'm currently the president of the Board of Directors for Hope and the Future. My colleagues have eloquently expressed what we're trying to do on South High Point Road, and I would just respectfully ask that the Alders approve our zoning, as well as our conditional use permits, and I yield the rest of the time, as does the rest of our development team. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so then we have Carrie Sanders of District 20, to be followed by Kyle Judd.
Carrie, you should have a prompt to unmute yourself. There you go.
Good evening, all. My name is Carrie Sanders, and I am a neighbor to Hope and the Future, and I've also been a volunteer with the organization over many years. I'm very much in support of this rezoning, because this project offers a few things that Madison strives so hard and so diligently to provide to create a great community. Number one, high-quality jobs are going to be happening here for those who will be employed at the site. Two, we're really addressing a new approach, new approach to Madison for accessible housing. And three, we're offering high-quality, affordable childcare in a very unique and intergenerational setting. All of these things combined can only create an opportunity to increase the well-being of all those who have the opportunity to be part of this great neighborhood development. Although the development is the first-of-its-kind to Madison, that is not the case nationally. In fact, there's been much research, as Paula identified previously, that shows the outcomes of such a development. And I, as a neighbor and a volunteer here, would love to see something like this in our great city of Madison. So I would like to say, you know, welcome to Hope and the Future, and for them to expand on the many, many years and many, many lives of impact that they have made, and to expand in this unique, intergenerational way. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Kyle Judd of District 20, to be followed by Amy Herriman. We have Kyle.
Yes, hello. I am a resident of Meadow Sweet Drive, directly east of Hope and the Future. I'd just like to say that we do wholeheartedly support what Hope and the Future's mission and what they stand for as a business and charitable organization. This expansion, however, is what we differ on. Their expansion of 19 units, large parking lot, daycare facility, et cetera, is an abrupt change to our neighborhood and the landscape of what we have here. Specifically, towards my property will be nine or 10 new balconies now facing and overlooking our backyard into our windows, et cetera. Unlike Carrie, she does not live next door. She lives in a completely different part of the neighborhood. So what we're asking for, over the last six months, we've asked for several things that Hope and the Future have not officially agreed to, but the major thing that we're really asking for here is a desperate plea, as part of their conditional use permits to be granted, is what we originally verbally agreed upon in prior meetings, that they would do fencing towards the north and along the east side of the property line, along with mature evergreen trees that are fast-growing to shield for privacy and wandering pets and residents that live there, which does happen quite frequently. So it's our ask, as a meeting-in-the-middle type of approach, that the Common Council honor our interests as well in granting these conditional use permits to Hope and the Future, so that they can also achieve their mission. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Amy Herriman of District 4, representing Hope and the Future, to be followed by Sandra Hall.
Hello, my name is Amy Herriman, and I'm a real estate attorney with Corals &amp; Brady. Our firm represents Hope and the Future, and have been working with them for many years on this project. Hope and the Future began their work in the town of Middleton, and recently annexed into the city, in hopes that they would be able to continue this development and this expansion. We've met with the neighbors quite a few times regarding screenings and fencing and things like that, and have agreed during the last several meetings that we would provide fencing in the north portion of the property to those most affected by the project, and to the screenings, which is also included in the conditional uses as provided by the plan commission. So we're very much in favor of this, and we very much want to work with the neighbors to make them feel comfortable with the project. So just wanted to share that, and then want to thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next registrant is Sandra Hall of Mount Horeb.
Hi, my mom actually lived at Hope and the Future, so this is my story. My father spent the last three years of his life in a nursing home, and he was neglected, over-medicated, and treated poorly by the overworked and underexperienced staff who didn't understand the many issues of a person suffering from Parkinson's. Shortly after he died, my mama had surgery with complications. She needed medical assistance to recover, and she was placed in the same nursing home where my dad had been. Sadly and hopelessly, my family watched my mom receive the same subcar treatment my dad had received from an overworked, understaffed facility. After just two months in the nursing home, my mama could no longer walk. She was confused. She suddenly didn't recognize many of her six children. She was on more than 20 medications plus two shots of insulin per day. She was 40 pounds overweight with major kidney and liver issues. The nursing home began talking about hospice. We knew she could get better, but we also knew if she stayed in the nursing home much longer, she was going to die, and we didn't know what to do. Our family prayers were answered when I was contacted by Rick and Karen. They had a opening at Hope and the Future, and we jumped at the chance to get my mom more individualized care. Within three months of living at Hope and the Future, Karen had worked with mama's doctors and reduced to or eliminated many of her medications. Mom's brain fog began to completely lift. She could walk a little bit on her own, and with the clean, fresh diet she received at Hope and the Future, she had lost approximately 15 pounds. After six months, my mom's quick wit was back. Her mind was once again sharp as a tack. She was down to one shot of insulin per day, and she had lost an additional 10 pounds. Within one year, my mama was completely a new person. She had lost 40 excess pounds. She could walk two miles by herself, and she no longer required any insulin at all. My mother was always a very reserved person and didn't socialize because it made her uncomfortable. But with the encouragement of the staff and residents at Hope and the Future, she blossomed. She really enjoyed living at Hope and the Future. She always looked forward to the mini concerts and the many varied visitors of all ages that frequented the house, and would individually greet as many people as she could. Due to the many generations of people who surrounded mama, she became this beautiful, outgoing, high-spirited individual. At Hope and the Future, she found her voice in creativity. She now loved talking and joking around and doing crafts with other residents living in the house. She was truly living her best life. Mama lived seven more years. We directly credit that to Hope and the Future for those additional beautiful years that had been given to her. Without Hope and the Future, my family truly believed she would have died in a nursing home within three months' time tops. Hope and the Future is a very special place, and adding the additional housing and generations of residents will only enrich the lives of those living there. We say it a lot, but it really does take a village. This goes for both old and young. Anyone who is lucky enough to live at Hope and the Future will be well-cared-for mentally, physically, spiritually, and socially.
Thank you. That's the last of our registrants wishing to speak. Are there questions for any of our registrants on Item 8? Alder Vitiver?
I'm not quite sure who wants to answer this, but somebody from Hope and the Future. Just curious as to what the application process is for residents to go there currently and what will be in the future, and who will be eligible for the childcare and elder care on-site.
For the seniors, you know, pretty much anybody's allowed to come, but they just call and get on our waiting list, which is usually kind of lengthy. But we do a combat... I was 20 years ago, I started the funding stream for folks that didn't have money for this kind of care with adult family homes. I was the first one to get permission to try doing this with seniors, so there's over 1,000 of those around the state for folks that need fiscal assistance. For the people that want to live in the housing, that is going to be life lease housing, there will be classes people will take to make sure they understand what an intentional intergenerational neighborhood is. So there'll be a bit of a process to that for anyone who's interested. And then the family housing will be the same. The affordable daycare, because we're primarily have been doing senior care, we're going to be working with another, with lighthouse schools. They do offer affordable daycare, so we do hope to give some priority to people that actually live in the neighborhood, but then there will be spaces, and those, you know, can be from other people's waitlists, so that answer.
Thank you. Hang out and we'll see. Also a question for you, Alder Bennett?
Yeah, I just wanted to understand, how is the housing piece affordable? Is it like by grants, tax credits, or...
We currently don't live in the right spot to get much in the way of affordable housing. We currently don't live in the right spot to get much in the way of affordable housing. Our fundraising, we hope to be able to bring the rent down for families. That will be rental housing, but it will have to be through fundraising at this point, just because we're outside of everything. We don't fit in the boxes. For folks that do life lease, this will, right now, again, because we don't fit for any affordable offerings because of where we're located, what we're offering with life lease housing is folks who have maybe need to downsize and sell their home. Life lease is kind of a hybrid between ownership and rental, so people kind of buy their unit like you would a condo, but because there are these classes and things, you have to do that through Hope in a Future. But they, we're a nonprofit, so they'll benefit from our tax, property tax exemption. And also because of the volunteer system, we can probably keep their monthly fees lower for the, you know, the condo association fees, because neighbors can help do some of that work so that we don't have to charge as much, you know, to hire that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Slack?
Yes. I did drive out there a couple times, most recently right before this meeting, and there was one letter submitted by a resident that I thought raised a good point, and I have since gotten an answer on this, but I just want to share it in case that person's listening. And it was the point about that road shrinking to be one lane, right at the point where you turn in your driveway there. But I've learned that there's going to be a turn-in lane or something that's going to be added.
That, let's see, the turn-in, I mean, where the road needs to widen, somebody else owns that property, and so that's not something that we'll do. My understanding is that, assuming that property gets developed one day, that's when that turn-in lane would change, but that's a city issue, not ours. Okay, no.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other questions. So thank you again. And we'll go on to our next public comment item, which is item number nine, a substitute creating sections of the Madison General Ordinance is to change the zoning of property located at 437 to 445 West Johnson Street, 430 to 440 West Dayton Street, and 215 to 221 North Basset Street in the 4th Aldermanic District. On item nine, we have two registrants wishing to speak. Brian Munson of District 13, representing Core Spaces LLC, and Doug Tickner from Chicago. Do we have Brian?
Brian was just here, and he hopped off, I guess. Oh, wait, he's back. Brian, you should have a prompt to unmute yourself.
So we have some debate here if Brian wishes to speak or not.
He is unmuted now.
Go ahead, Brian. We're not hearing you on our end, Brian, although you look like you're unmuted to us. May have a headset issue or a microphone issue. Let's see if we have Doug Tickner.
Here in person.
Yep, go ahead.
Brian is actually on a camping trip right now. He's a valued member of our development team, so thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. I am with the applicant, Core Madison Basset LLC, just speaking in support of this development. And there are some other folks that I think that are on the call and maybe have registered for this item and item number 49, and we're here to answer any questions should they arise.
Thank you. We do have a number of folks from the development team who are registered available to answer questions. Are there questions for registrants on item nine? Seeing none. We'll go on. Our next public comment is on item 16, declaring the city of Madison to be a sanctuary for trans and non-binary individuals. Our first registrant on item 16 is Charlie Warner of District 15, to be followed by Allison Warner, to be followed by Brian Eucombs. Do we have Charlie?
I was here Thursday, I believe, for the countywide vote on this resolution, and pretty much here to do the same thing as I did last time. I have no doubt in my mind that all of the people here will pass this resolution, but I just really want to say that trans people deserve to live in Madison and to feel safe in Madison, and, like my other speech, I did not plan this out. Yeah.
State the facts. Allison Warner of District 15, to be followed by Brian Eucombs, to be followed by Tessa Jade Price.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight and for putting this resolution forward. As Charlie's parents, I also, of course, find it very important to make sure all residents of City of Madison feel safe and supported. Dina's not here right now, so I wanted... Good, good, okay. We'll song and dance up here for a second, because as a resident of District 15, my entire family had the opportunity to support Dina and her campaign, and it means a lot to us to have Dina representing us in our district and bringing forth this resolution this evening. I'll, I know, there she is! Yeah, no worries. I'll keep it short and sweet, too, because as Charlie said, knowing how many of you all have already sponsored this resolution, we have, you know, high hopes and faith that this resolution will pass with flying colors this evening. The two things I just want to add is that lovely resolution you all did this evening, declaring Pride Month, you know, showed the city of Madison and Dane County and the state of Wisconsin. We've already been leaders here. You all have been leaders here in the LGBTQ+ community, showing activism and leadership for so long. That was an amazing resolution with the history of all the activism and leadership in this community. What I hope, I know part of the inspiration that you all putting this forward in the county board last week, what I hope is that it inspires other communities around the state to do the same thing. Dane County and the city of Madison, we are often leaders on issues like this, but we know we are not alone in having so many in the LGBTQ+ community that need to also know they are safe and supported in their communities and all across Wisconsin. So I hope this inspires other communities to do the same, so that we can show our legislature that this is something we value in the state of Wisconsin, that what we value is in protecting our transgender, non-binary folks. And again, I hope the communities all across the state take this as an inspiration to do more. So thank you for all you do and taking on this resolution this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Brian Eucombs of District 15, representing G-Safe, to be followed by Tessa Jade Price, to be followed by Leandra Matos Rodriguez. Brian?
Hi, I'm back. I'll be shorter this time. Juan, I'm really proud to be part of Dina's alder district, so I'm just excited for your representation here on the board, too. I did want to thank the common council and the mayor for honoring Juan Jose Lopez. So back when I worked at Briar Patch back in the day, and he was my boss, because we were nonprofits, we took a trip to DC and we had to share a bed together. And I think I was the first gay guy that he shared a bed with, so it was very platonic, right? But I appreciated Juan for being like, "We're gonna do it?" Like, not like that. "We're gonna, we're gonna share that bed, and it's gonna be okay." And so I just really appreciated his boldness and his willingness to embrace discomfort. And it's so appropriate to honor him tonight. I just want to thank you for sponsoring and proposing this resolution to make Madison a sanctuary city. As I said last Thursday, there's a whole heck of a lot being said about the trans and non-binary community right now. We know that over 500 bills have been proposed at the national level, and I know that trans and non-binary students in Madison are watching, right? Whether they're on TikTok, whether on, wherever they're at, they're watching and they're seeing and they're feeling the impact of all those negative things being said about that. And one of the things I inherited from my mom was inability to say colloquialisms correctly. But what I'm trying to say is, that thing where, you know, for every one bad thing you say in a relationship, you have to say so many more positive things to counter that. And for those that are out there listening tonight that think, "Why should we do this?" You know, this might seem like just a feel-good resolution, there's a whole lot of bad things that have been said about trans and non-binary people in our city over the last year, and this is one really important piece to put back, one of those, that one important step to start to refill or to be that counter to that one negative thing. So I just really want to thank you and appreciate you for making this resolution. It does have impact. It does have meaning, and it will have significant meaning in the lives of folks in our community. So thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Tessa Jade Price of District 6, to be followed by Leandra Matos Rodriguez, to be followed by Optima Kamtikar.
Hello. This works. I know this works. We're just like talking to it? Hello. Yeah, my name's Tessa. I do work with a little group called Trans Apeski Madison. We like, do like grassroots advocacy stuff, not a nonprofit despite public opinion, just by virtue of, like, I like to endorse candidates. I think that's important. Additionally, I'd like to thank G-Safe and Outreach for all the work they do, and the city government for everything that y'all have done to protect LGBTQ rights and to advance equality and to advance diversity, and I think it's very meaningful. I first got involved just because I kept seeing hate stickers outside my apartment, and that's something that's been happening for years now, and it's been happening all across Madison for years now. And that's kind of like the lowly place where this sort of thing starts. And like, I ended up, you know, here or other places, organizing a bunch of amazing people, a lot of young people who want to get involved and want to see things get better, who are scared about what they see. And as a trans woman, it's, I have to tell them that, like, it is scary, and we don't know what's going to happen, and we're not sure if you'll be able to get your health care in the near future. Because if you look at the GOP right now, I believe they're up in Appleton, or they were up in Appleton very recently, talking about their platform, they are against transgender-affirming care, life-saving gender-affirming care, for people under the age of 18. And that is something that we know is dangerous. That is something that we know is counter to all scientific and medical evidence, and that is something that we need to fight against as best as we can. And that can be done both on the city level and on the street and on the state level, but it's just a matter of getting people together and coalitions that, like, make change, like, both on the ground and in these, like, chambers, with really uncomfortable seats, by the way. I'm not gonna slam it too much, but like, geez, I need like a chiropractor or something. But the important thing here is that this is an important resolution. It's a very important start, and it's part of something to make this place feel safe for people. Because I think a lot of people come here, especially young people, because they feel like it's a safe place to be trans, safe place to be themselves, and to kind of dress how they want and talk how they want and do what they want, you know, just live their lives in pursuit of happiness and all that jazz. And that's something that we can do in Madison, and that's something that I think we have to actively protect. I think diversity is a powerful thing, but it's diversity in action and coalition and intersections that really make things work. And I guess that's kind of what I'm here to support today. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Leandra Matos Rodriguez, to be followed by Optima Kamtikar, to be followed by Logan Bits. Leandra? Doesn't look like we have Leandra in the room.
It looks like they're not present on Zoom as well.
Thank you. So then, do we have Optima Kamtikar of District 19?
I am not seeing Optima on Zoom.
We have her in the room. Go ahead.
All right. I had a speech written down. I'm not going to have to get it. I was prepared and terrified of another night like last Thursday, and I was gearing up for round two of facing off against, I don't know, maybe the article said, a recent article said over 50. I thought it was more like 100, but basically. I'm just glad, and I wanted to use this time instead to thank everyone who tonight has helped make that not happen again. So I wanted to thank the representatives from G-Safe and from Outreach, and also thank the individuals, both trans people and allies who have come to speak and support and who no doubt will continue. And I would like to, I would like to finally, since I don't have to vigorously defend this proposal as much as I was expecting to, I would also like to see the Madison City Council do a bit more in terms of, the procedure cites a lot of, sorry, the procedure cites other laws that states have been passing, such as drag bans, such as bathroom bans, such as trans kids and sports bans, the list goes on. But the only law it proposes to urge the Madison Police Department to hold back from enforcing is the gender-affirming care ban that may be passed. So I would like to see more done in future resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Logan Bits, Enterprise Drive, to be followed by Sunshine Rainbow, to be followed by Vikar Vikka Edastiel. Logan? Don't see Logan, so Sunshine, Rainbow of District 6.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sunshine Rainbow. My pronouns are she/her, they/them, queen and goddess, nothing else. I am an activist, poet, artist, and drag queen, and I'm also a trans woman. And today I'm here, today I'm here to speak in support of this bill, of this resolution. But I'm also here to say that the city needs to do more. The city needs to do more to protect us. This is a start, and this resolution is a start, but the city needs to do more to protect us and make sure we feel safe in this city, make sure we feel safe in this state, and don't just tell us that you support us, but I need y'all to also show us that y'all support Shout out to Dina over there. You're such a big inspiration to me, and it makes me happy to see representation. It makes me happy to see somebody who identifies similarly to me. It makes me happy to see representation because representation matters. With that said, continue to spread love and kindness into this world, and to all those people who identify as trans or different in any way, continue to be yourself, and don't be afraid to love yourself and be kind to yourself. I'm done.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Vikar Vikka Edastiel, to be followed by Ben Weger, to be followed by Tara Stangler. Hopefully, I got it right this time, Tara.
My loves, I'm the vicker at St. John's Lutheran, but I speak for myself. I'm also a street preacher, and you can find me most Saturdays at the farmer's market downtown. I speak love into this world, and I stand in support of this measure. We need this. I'm a woman. I am queer. I'm transgender. We are under attack around the nation, and I speak as a woman of privilege. I am a white woman in this world, okay? And even though it's unsafe for me to go to the bathroom, it's unsafe for me to go to the bathroom at the Capitol when I'm there preaching on Saturdays, I still have privilege over my black and brown sisters. I have privilege over those in poverty. I have privilege that I'm not living in a state where we're under attack. So many of our youth, so many of our people that are fleeing states, are fleeing states, moving, uprooting themselves because of the attacks on youth, on people who are transgender, are doing so, but have the money to do it. on people who are transgender, are doing so, but have the money to do it. Those who don't have the money to do it, those who live in poverty, still struggling, still struggling each day and facing such harm. I speak as a woman of faith. I speak as a woman who reads the Bible, right? I actually read it. And I name that for any of all y'all who are using words of faith, I don't know if anybody here does that, to do harm to us, right? You don't do harm to us. I know that. You're a delight. The Bible is so supportive of us. And I'm gonna name a couple pieces, and I know I don't necessarily need to for this measure, but I'm gonna name them in case you need to go back to your constituents. People talk about the sin of Sodom. They talk about how Madison will become a Sodom and Gomorrah. Well, let me tell you the sin of Sodom, Ezekiel 1649, sin of Sodom. People had excess of food. The people had prosperous ease. They did nothing to aid the poor and the needy. We stand here with the opportunity to welcome, right, to welcome. This is the call. Anybody who brings words of faith and says, "We are not here to welcome," and I don't care where your words of faith come from. I speak with Jewish leaders. I speak with Muslim people. I speak with pagan leaders. And all see words of faith to support we who are queer and we who are trans, to support those most marginalized in our society. I could go on. I could go on, but I won't. I won't. I love you all. Do this work. And as others have said, this is a start. We who are queer, especially we who are trans, black and brown, trans people are under such attack. We can't be silent. We can't succumb to the sin of silence. We can't succumb to the sin of accepting the world as it is. Speak, my loves. Love you.
Thank you, Vikar. Our next registrant is Ben Weger of District 15, to be followed by Tara Stangler of District 2, to be followed by Jan Sternbach. Ben? Take your pick of microphones.
I just happen to know that I'm not tall enough for you to see my shirt from behind the podium. My name's Ben Weger. My pronouns are he/him. And I had the distinct privilege of serving on Dina Nina's campaign for District 15. And when Dina Nina reached out to me about being here tonight, my first thought was definitely, what will I wear? Between work and arriving here this evening, I stopped for a quick bite to eat. And as I got out of my car, I made the choice to not yet change my shirt because I don't feel safe walking around in this shirt alone, even here in downtown Madison. And as my sister said, I have distinctly more privilege than so many, especially my trans sisters of color. As someone who grew up and began my career in Florida, I know and have seen firsthand how legislation and representation at the municipal level can build safe spaces for marginalized communities. Earlier in my career, I watched as queer friends in an unprotected workspace were wrongfully fired simply for who they were and the way in which their local municipality was able to protect them because of legislation that they had passed. And four years later, as I was recovering from trans-affirming surgery with drains hanging from my sides, I found myself sitting on my back line eye with my wife as the children we were fostering and preparing to adopt napped. As my boss and his boss and my boss's spouse forced themselves into my own home, after supporting my gender-affirming surgery and pledging their willingness to support me on this journey and our family in any way possible, they appeared in this moment to tell me that the organization simply wasn't ready to deal with this, to deal with me. My options? Resign and get a severance that would pay for more than the cost of my surgery that wasn't covered by insurance? Or be fired and risk losing custody of our children due to a lack of employment? Thankfully, I found employment quickly and completed my gender transition. After changing my name and my pronouns in that workplace, something happened. People started to listen when I spoke in meetings. Six months later, I received a 30% pay raise while working the exact same job. As anti-trans legislation continues to mount, trans and non-binary youth in more than 95% of our country are being told by their civic leaders that they don't matter. They're being sent messages. They're being received as being told that they would frankly be better off dead. And statements like the one we are asking to be supported here tonight save lives. With no intent to undermine or detract from the effort of those who authored and sponsored this resolution, let me join others in saying that this resolution is not enough. It is the bare minimum that this body can do. And to pass this resolution frankly is not a celebratory occasion. In fact, I lament its necessity. As a word of caution, let us not move to pat ourselves on the back for simply stating that we value the basic humanity of transgender and non-binary people. Thank you.
Thank you. The next registrant is Tara Stangler, to be followed by Jan Sternbach, to be followed by Megan Rothstein. Tara? Okay. Jan Sternbach of District 15, to be followed by Megan Rothstein, to be followed by, oh, that's the last person wishing to speak.
Hi. I know a lot of you. And I know that this is not as scary as it could be, even though I hate speaking in public, which some people don't ever believe. And I'm gonna admit from the beginning that I'm really here arguing with the people that were here last Thursday night. That was incredibly scary. That was so scary that it went as long as it did. It was scary because of the level of ignorance that was displayed. It was scary because the frankly prurient interest that some opponents had in the genitalia of youth was used to absolutely smear people who have care and consideration and love in their heart. And that's why I'm here. I knew you guys were gonna do the right thing. I know who most of you are and I appreciate it. I appreciate that I don't have to stand here and talk about saboteg mushis or two-spirited people or who knew? Did anyone in here know that there were seven genders discussed in the Talmud? I didn't know this. Jewish girl, no idea. Anyway, I don't have to do all that because you're already on board. But I want anyone who did not watch what happened last Thursday night to really think about how scary it was in here and how scary it was to see people. It was bad enough getting through the circle of praying people to get in the building. But to walk by these darling little children being pulled away as people walked by them evidently to chill them. It was very important for me to be reminded that Madison is not a safe space. Wisconsin is not a safe space. And I really appreciate you. I'm also really glad that Dina's my alder. But I do think that the level of fear that I'm having as a Tia and a mom to trans people, I'm scared. I'm scared for them. I'm scared for the younger one who's gonna grow up and be in this world that the people on Thursday were fighting so hard against. So I just wanted to thank you. That's my real purpose in being here tonight. And also to think crude and rude thoughts about the people that were so objectionable on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last registrant wishing to speak is Megan Rothstein from Middleton.
I also wrote this in response to last Thursday. And I feel so thankful that we don't have to read it, but here I am. I'm gonna read it.
Megan, just pull the mic down to you.
Thank you. And thank you for this opportunity. I regularly read anything I can by journalist Erin Reid and feel well-equipped to speak given Reid's deep focus and analysis while over 500 bills of anti-trans legislation metabolize in their various stages in the United States. I also follow Reid's ever-changing and updated political map, watching Wisconsin hanging over what may well be an abyss that we see in less than two years' time. But I'm not gonna speak about that. Others tonight have done so in eloquently. Instead, I will read parts, parts due to understandable limited time, of a related article Reid wrote. I center her voice as she is a journalist, a woman and trans, who in turn centers the lived experience of another transgender woman. And this will be prefaced with a content warning for suicide. Reid wrote in part, "Last night, Eden Knight, a transgender woman with many friends in our community, took her life. With her passing, she left a final message about the circumstances that led to her death. Originally from Saudi Arabia, Eden was trafficked out of the United States. Forced to detransition, she was brought back to Saudi Arabia and given no future where she could be herself. Her final message reveals what so many transgender people and those who care about us have said for so long. For many of us, forced detransition can be a fate worse than death. It is with hope that what I tell you here will cause change and that she will be remembered in her passing. Eden's note details that two fixers, allegedly a man by the name of Michael and a woman by the name of Ellen, got in touch with her with a message of hope, that they could patch things over with her father. So they delivered her to DC and a lawyer by the name of Bader took over from there. And over time, the lawyer made it so that Eden was entirely dependent on him and unable to leave. Because Eden had remained in the United States illegally, she was afraid." And this is the part, this is why I'm so thankful for you. "She was afraid that if she tried to run away, she would be reported and sent back to Saudi Arabia. Unfortunately, that seemed to be the plan the entire time. Eventually, she had no option and was forced to go back to Saudi Arabia as she was completely cut off from her community, her money and her independence. Eden's death represents a serious atrocity committed to a transgender woman by people who are allowed to operate within the United States. Her death also represents a chance for us to make things right and a chance to show a commitment to transgender people within our borders, within the city. Transgender refugees should be given full protection and a number to call if they're being trafficked. An asylum status should be given full protection."
I'm sorry, that's your time. Thank you.
Thank you for giving her this much. Thank you. And thank you for the resolution.
We have no other registrants wishing to speak. Are there questions for any of our registrants? Alder Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just ask for more time to hear the rest of what I believe it's Meg Rothstein had to share, if I can hear the rest of it. I was...
Thank you, Alder. Thank you, Vikar.
Eden's death also represents a chance for us to make things right and a chance to show a commitment to the transgender people within our borders. Transgender refugees should be given full protections and a number to call if they're being trafficked. An asylum status should be granted liberally to this population who could face certain death if they are deported. Eden should have been made to feel safe to reach out for help in the United States. Likewise, transgender people already in our own borders should be protected from state governments that seek to do trans people what Eden's family did to her. Forced detransition is not something that only happens in countries less tolerant of transgender people. States like South Dakota have already passed laws making this mandatory for some and specifically telling doctors how to do it. Eden's words show the pain of many transgender people who are forced into circumstances similar to her. Sometimes, medical detransition is forced on a transgender people by family. Sometimes, it is politicians that attempt to force detransition on people. This is why we need protections. We can't just say, "Well, family will do it right." The one string that runs through all of this is that these people think that transgender individuals are wrong to be who they are. And that's what these resolutions are for. Eden closed her note off by saying she wanted to be a leader for people like her. Her friends have told me many stories about how wonderful a woman she was and how much she cared about her community. And she said she wanted to give our kids, to see our kids grow up and fight for us and she wanted to see transgender rights worldwide. The only way we will ever see that is if we call for full accountability of those who seek to harm us and a future where we can take action to protect transgenders, people both within our borders and worldwide. Eden, we'll do our best to make the world real for you and for the countless others we lost along the way. Madison, this is my part, will be able to better protect human beings by getting out ahead of anti-trans laws, lest Wisconsin becomes another South Dakota, for just one example. As Reid accurately stated, transgender people know where this path leads. Thank you for listening to and learning from and humanely utilizing their knowledge. A personal note I wasn't going to make until I realized last Thursday that this stuff included apparently the pattern of using biblical passages out of context. And because that seems to be a thing, I'm going to try. To my transgender loved ones, friends and neighbors, this is from the Book of Ruth 1:16. "Don't ask me to leave you and turn back. Wherever you go, I will go. Wherever you live, I will live. Your people will be my people and your God will be my God. Wherever you die, I will die, and that is where I will be buried. And may the Lord punish me severely if I allow anything but death." To separate us. Thank you.
Be my favorite Bible quote right there. Are there any other questions for our registrants on item 16? Seeing none, thank you all. And we will go on. To item 49, which is approving a certified survey map of property owned by Core Madison Basset LLC located at 437 to 445 West Johnson, 430 to 440 West Dayton, and 215 to 221 North Basset. Our first registrant wishing to speak is Nathan Schilling of District 4, to be followed by Doug Tickner. Do we have Nathan? Go ahead.
Hey, folks. I am, like they said, from District 4, which is two blocks away from here. At the end of the summer, I'm going to be technically homeless for three days. Luckily, I'm going to be able to stay at home with my mom, who lives about, you know, 45 minutes from here. But there are many people in Madison who are going to have this problem with nowhere to stay. And there are many people in Madison who have this problem on the long term. And as you all know, there is a housing crisis in Madison and I'm sure you're all trying to fix it to the best of your ability. But the solution, in my opinion, is not to build more luxury housing. This luxury housing is slumlord management with better marketing and a higher cost. It's not good for the people of Madison to have to pay this excessive cost. I'm sorry if I get a little shaky tonight. I've been having a problem with my asthma for the past couple days. On this property specifically, there is excessive spending, specifically on an unnecessary pool and gym for student housing. A lot of students or all students already have access to the NIC, which is very near to this house or this development. And a lot of luxury housing also fails to meet the demands of its residents. I have a friend who lives in one of these housing apartments and they have had vomit, or they at one time had vomit on the floor for two weeks. This management that operates luxury housing in Madison is not good for the city. In Madison, we need affordable, useful and accessible housing. The UW housing, the student housing, is exploitative of the students. You're now required to purchase a meal pass if you live there unless you get an exemption. And you have done a lot for queer and trans people tonight. And this is an opportunity for you to do more. Queer and trans people are those most affected by this plight of unaffordable housing. Not only are they denied housing occasionally in the market, but they also have less access to jobs and are on average paid less. I myself am non-binary and this issue has actually affected me to some degree. I myself am non-binary, and this issue has actually affected me to some degree in my search for housing in Madison. So the other thing I'd like to say is that this development removes affordable housing in Madison. And then I acknowledge that there is apparently a limitation on your ability to decide on zoning for affordability. But I ask that you think of this position instead. You should go forward with a policy of social housing. I know that this hasn't been developed by any of you guys so far, but I think that for the sake of, you know, democracy as it should be, you should democratize housing in Madison. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Doug Tickner of Chicago.
Good evening again. Doug Tickner, representing the developer Core Madison Basset. Again, I'm just here speaking in support of this development. And I'm happy to answer any questions that we have on the development tonight. We're very excited. We've gone through a long process to get here. And yeah, we are just excited to be here today and really look forward to obtaining approval. Thank you.
Thank you. No other registrants on this item. Are there questions for either of our registrants? Alder Slack?
Yes, I'd just like to know what the rent ranges are that you anticipate for this particular development.
So we are comping comparable to the Hub and the James in the market. But with the property being four years, three years out, we don't have exact numbers, but comparable with market rate properties in the market.
Alder Govindarajan?
What are the current market rate properties for the James and the Hub right now?
I think they, I couldn't commit to a hard number right now, but you can look online. Any property website has the information.
Yeah. Currently, I guess to answer my own question, sorry, is if you are renting at the James, it is if you have a shared bedroom, so two beds in one bedroom, you will be paying about $1,230 a month. Students will be making much less than that a month. But I won't make this into a lecture. It's supposed to be a question.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett?
Yes. So I understand when this was first proposed, there was, you know, a word used to kind of include price-conscious housing. At first, is that a concept that has been abandoned by the development team?
So it's more of a, we like to call it a price-sensitive unit mix. Core space is made up of a lot of young, recently graduated UW alum, some, you know, I think 30% of our team UW alumni studied real estate here. So we are very conscious about price setting. We do have a patented unit type that, unlike our rival developers, who just put two twin beds in a room and rent those two twin beds at, you know, those prices, we came up with a patented double occupancy unit type that provides a higher degree of privacy. So you're not just in a room with somebody else. And those are the types of units we are talking about. We presented a video on our neighborhood meeting to everybody that came and kind of went through the units, and I think people found them relatively attractive.
So the two-bedroom, so like the units that have shared, sorry, the shared units are price-conscious but have the same $1,200 ticket on them that my colleague just noted, right?
So again, we don't have exact figures to speak through tonight, but we would be providing a better solution to the current double occupancy, two twin beds in a single room for a more, you know, attractive basis.
But the prices in general would be competitive to the James and the Hub and other market rate units? Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Govindarajan, another question?
Yes. You guys mentioned the neighborhood meeting that you guys presented at. And I understand that there was a survey done by the Neighborhood Neighborhood Association that was shared with you. Can you talk a little bit about the feedback you got from mainly students in that area, both the positives and the negatives?
Yes. I'm not sure we ever got the official results. We were told a few of the high-level takeaways, but we never got the official results from 90 respondents. So I would have to follow up on that.
Highlights work.
Yeah, I can jump in. I think several of the comments were with the housing crisis in Madison from a price and a supply standpoint. In addition to that, we heard a lot of comments about sustainability. And we also had comments with regards to public art. I think the way that we are thinking about this development and any development in any jurisdiction that we do work in, and Madison specifically, a lot of them are going through what Madison is going through with regards to a housing crisis. We are developing this project specifically in alignment with the underlying code, the downtown development guidelines and the height map. And we're bringing much more supply on this specific site than is currently there. So that's one way that we're addressing it. Secondly, this building, we are currently achieving LEED Silver designation for the building. That's come up quite a bit, not just at, well, at the neighborhood meeting, but also at Plan Commission. This is something that, you know, we find is important, not just, you know, because it's a good thing to do, but it's also good for our future. It's good for our kids. And, you know, we are doing that by providing EV chargers going above and beyond what's required by code. We are setting aside space for solar panels or alternative energy on the roof. And then lastly, this is one that we're very excited about and that we look forward to working both with, you know, the Plan Commission and UDC and the Neighborhood. Steering Committee is providing a space for public art. We've already started that process and having some conversations with artists locally. But once we, you know, continue to move down that road, we look forward to engaging them further. So I think those were the big takeaways that I could remember. I'm not getting too specific on the 90 comments, I think, or so that were on that particular meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Slack, another question?
Is there anyone here from planning, just so I can understand the ram of the input?
We're not in discussion of the item yet, Alder. We're just in public comment. Are there any other questions for any of the registrants? All right, seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
That is the last item that we have public comment on. Alder Vitterver.
10-minute break, please.
Is there a second? Moved in second to take a 10-minute break. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, we're back at 9:16.
Yep, yep. So you're...
We're about one minute out, folks. If you can come back to your seats.
Okay, if you can have Alders back in their seats, please. Oh, there we go. Okay. I'm going to call the meeting back to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Alder Field. Figaroa Cole. Govendarajan. Harrington McKinney. Knox. Alden Knox. Latimer Burris.
Here.
Madison. Martinez Rutherford. Miazze. Rummel. Slack. Tischler. Revere. Vidiver. Wajali is excused. Bennett. Conklin.
President.
Curry. Duncan. Evers. Madam Mayor, we have quorum.
All right. Quorum having been achieved, public comment being over, we will go through the items excluded from the consent agenda, starting with item number eight, which is Legis 75151, a substitute creating sections of the Madison general ordinances to assign permanent zoning of a property located at 1115 South High Point Road in the 20th Aldermanic District. President Curry can have a motion, please. It's moved and seconded to adopt item eight. Are there questions or is there discussion on item eight? Seeing no questions or discussion and, oh, Alder Rummel.
I just wanted to clarify what I heard Alder Slack say about the road configuration. If someone was, I'm not sure the applicant can solve that, but just so we understand.
Alder, I'm wondering if there's somebody from perhaps either Director Stoudt or Director Tao can speak to the traffic impacts and road configuration. Go ahead, Director Stoudt.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, with apologies, I can't speak in detail to the questions that were asked about the width of the roadway that is not directly adjacent to the property. I'm not seeing any related conditions of approval from our traffic engineering division related to that.
I didn't hear the end of what you said, Heather.
Sure, I was reviewing the conditions of approval that were recommended on the conditional use that was approved by the Plan Commission, and I didn't see any analysis or conditions related to that issue, so I'm unable to address that question. My apologies.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. No other Alders in the queue with questions or discussion. It's been moved and seconded, Alder Field.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to note that this was an item with unanimous support from the Plan Commission and that, you know, we had a discussion about the impacts on residents of the parking lot and in particular, the folks who live to the north of this lot. And so in the motion for approval, we included language about accounting for a privacy fence and landscape and improved landscaping right there to try to shield the impact of headlights at night, things like that.
Thank you, Alder. We have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item eight and go on to item nine. And without objection, we'll take up items nine and forty-nine together as they relate to the same properties. So item nine is Legis 77208, a substitute creating sections of the Madison general ordinances to change the zoning. And item forty-nine is approving a certified survey map of property owned by Core Madison Basset. And all of this is at 437 to 445 West Johnson, 430 to 440 West Dayton, and 215 to 221 North Basset in the 4th Aldermanic District. So without objection, we'll take up items nine and forty-nine. Motion, please, Alder Curry.
Moved to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt items nine and forty-nine. There are questions, discussion, Alder Govendarajan.
I object. I think I would like a discussion.
We're not voting yet.
Sorry.
We're in discussion now.
Oh, my bad. Still new at this. So I want to say this. So not a single student I have spoken to is in favor of a development like this. And I have spoken to hundreds of students over the past few weeks, individuals who are living here and are genuinely struggling to find the housing. Madison is focusing on building more houses, which is great. However, that's not really what we need. We need more houses, but we need to focus on building the right type of housing. And that is different depending on the neighborhood. If you live in a more suburban area, that is more different than living downtown. Having housing in a larger apartment complex like this means that students are going to have to pay probably more than $1,200 a month for a bed. I realize you guys have a patented thing, but I don't believe I know what that means, and we haven't really gotten much of an answer about that. So the survey that was sent out by the Campus Area Neighborhood Association, which I happen to be an executive board member of, I have the survey. Almost 100 students did that within a time span of a few weeks in the middle of summer. If you guys as Alders have 100 people reaching out to you for any one item, you would take that seriously. So please listen up. Out of the almost 100 people, not a single person called this affordable. Every single person who even spoke on affordability said that this is not affordable. Some went far as to say it is inhumane because here's some math. A student can work about 20 hours per week. Most average students work, can find a job for about 15 hours, sorry, $15 per, $15 per hour. If you do the math, $15 per hour, 20 hours a week, you make exactly $1,200 a month. Now, let's say this is comparable to the James and the Hub. If you're paying $1,200 a month for a bed, let's actually just say with your patent, you're paying $1,000 a month. That leaves 200 for groceries, 200 for textbooks, 200 for living, 200 for travel, 200 for what? Like, how are we supposed to make a living as a student incurring thousands of dollars in debt while just trying to get an education? I realize that Plan Commission voted because they met a bunch of criteria, but common council needs to vote based on what type of housing Madison needs. Many of you don't live downtown, which is completely okay, but I am telling you, this is not the type of housing downtown needs. We hear over and over again that students feel failed by this body, and that is the truth because this is what happens. And many on this body might think that students are only here for four years. And that might be true, but that is the fault of this body. We will not stay here for more than four years unless you allow us to. We want, I will speak for myself here. I have fallen in love with Madison. I moved here six, I moved to Wisconsin six or seven years ago, and I moved here from the East Coast. It was a much more diverse place. It was a much more equitable place compared to Wisconsin as a whole, and I wanted to get out pretty soon. But I moved to Madison three years ago just to come here for college, and I have kind of fallen in love with the city. And that is the same for many students, but the problem we're running into is, can I swear here? I won't. The problem is, we are running into the thought of, crap, I love this town, I love this city, I feel safe, I feel equitable. This town, this city is doing things to make me feel safe, but I can't afford it. I can barely afford rent. How am I supposed to afford being able to buy a house when what the vacancy rate is like 2%? How am I supposed to be able to do that? I would really like to do that as an individual myself, and I have some kind of privilege knowing, being able to access knowledge and information sitting on this body. The average student who is struggling to pay rent or just get Bs and As on their classes, if they're lucky, will not have time for this information. Last time I spoke, last week, I had a speech, and that might have gone better than this because I coordinated that a bit better. But this time, some of you might have noticed, as I was questioning the developers, I am literally shaking because I am pissed off. And I am pissed off because everyone else in my district and in Mike's district and everyone's district who has students are pissed off. Common council cannot keep doing this. Students, there are 50,000 students here who attend UW Madison. There are thousands of more young people who will come here one day. Madison is seeing 10,000 people move in every year. A lot of that are students, and we cannot keep failing them. I really, really hope all of you vote no against this. And if that results in something unexpected, then I think that's a fight that Madison should have because 50,000 people is a sixth of this population. That's multiple districts put together, and it's a fight worth having. This will not be the first time you hear this from me, but I'm really hoping that it is the last. So I really hope all of you vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett.
Thank you, and I want to thank my colleague for speaking to this matter. I think that it's important for all of us Alders, especially us downtown Alders, to speak for and to speak up for our constituents who we know are going through this issue. And I know I have like all these random notes that I've made, but I'm also shaking because it's so frustrating when we know we can't afford to live in this city for context of what market rate is even more than like MGR said, and to put it into like a person's, like a human concept to these numbers. During the campaign, I spoke to a constituent that lives in a two-bedroom, two-bathroom house at the waterfront, paying $2,100. Next year, from between 2023 to 2024, their rent raised from $2,100 to $3,800 a month for two-bed, two-bath. I knocked doors in the James and the Hub in every single, in the, what is it called? Embassy apartments. Every single luxury high-rise that is in that area, and I heard the same thing over and over again. My rent is increasing too much. My rent for a studio apartment jumped from $1,100 to $1,600 just in one year. And you heard it from the development team. They want to be competitive with these, with the same developments. And I've heard from my colleagues and that, you know, literally coming out of our mouth, like people's mouths is we don't care about students. And I think that is a tragedy for Madison. I think it's tragic that Madison is the number one, or that the university is like one of the top drivers of economic mobility in this city. We heard all of our colleagues that work at the UW Madison and that is representative of our population where UW Madison is the number one employer in the city, where people come here and come to Madison, come to the university and stay in Madison. And yet more and more, we have out-of-state students with parental income that is far above middle-class income that can pay these luxury high-rise prices that are taking these places in these developments. I'm not saying maybe they might fall in love like my colleague over here. Maybe not. And that is space we're taking away from people that could stay in our city. It's disgusting. And I understand this idea of like supply, demand and everything. Trust me, I took those real estate classes. I am a real estate, I graduated with a real estate degree from the UW, from UW Madison. I wish that I had less of a conscience and could be a luxury high-rise developer and make a lot more money than I am, but I'm not. And in a, in elastic market, rents are not going to decrease when you put in more housing. It's just, it's economics. And I don't understand why we constantly put in the same development, same blockbuster four-point power slide development and expect that one day trickle-down economics will work. Because it's not. That area between the two-block radius of Gorham and Francis has grown by 6,000 residents in the past 10 years, and rents are skyrocketing, not going down. So, and then I just, it's just so disgusting to me to think that, you know, we're lining the pockets of developers, of investors, and not putting the power back into our students that are struggling, that are literally dropping out because they don't have a place to live in Madison. So I understand that there's limited ways that we can do, of what we can do in Madison due to the state, the state, the state legislature has put us in. However, I do think that there is a responsibility of developments, of developers that want to develop in this city to provide the type of housing that our constituents want. I think that there is a corporate and social responsibility for these developers to provide quality housing that doesn't use cheap materials and call it luxury and that at least sets aside some units of the affordable units that this development is demolishing. And I find it incumbent upon all of us Alders to recognize what the thousands of constituents are saying and telling us about affordable housing and not falling into this idea that trickle-down economics will someday work. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Slack.
Madam Mayor, so a couple of things. I too agree with my colleague Alder Bennett on this. I'm getting pretty tired of this narrative that the rents are going to magically go down, presumably if we're really talking affordable, in the hundreds of dollars, the more we keep building at market rate. I just don't buy that argument. We're in a landlocked city. There is only so much land, and the land in and around the campus area is extremely expensive. I have, one of the things, one of the questions I have is, I really don't understand why it is the city's seemingly sole problem to solve the student affordability, housing affordability crisis. I would really like to know what the university is doing, even if they can't build right now because of state, state law, they can certainly be planning for thousands, thousands of more student housing units. And they have the land to do it on the West Campus, they have the land to do it in Eagle Heights, they have the land to do it in the Research Park. But we have to be super intentional, they would have to be super intentional about making sure that they step up and help solve the problem that they are part, that they created, to be honest. They're inviting tens of thousands of students here every year. I am a university professor, I teach students at all levels at the UW, and housing, this really is a crisis. And there are people dropping out. I told I totally agree with Alder Bennett on this. I'm just not sure why it's our problem to solve this. I want to know what the university is doing, what we're doing to, to work with the university to make sure that they take on this responsibility in a, in a much greater degree. That said, we need developers. You know, it, these things aren't, these more units are not going to be built without private market developers. There are investors behind those developers. Out of the goodness of their heart, they're not going to be able to make rents truly affordable for the students in this area. But we don't, we're not sitting on, you know, billions of dollars as a city to, to create these, these units ourselves, these developments ourselves. So unless we're going to use specific tools like land banking or being intentional about how we zone all the, all the land right around the university. And it's not, you know, I, I'm just not sure how this is going to get solved, keep continuing in the direction we're going. Now, I realize this is not entirely on point with the thing before us. What I do want to know from planning staff is what are the implications of this zoning change request? Like what exactly is happening if we approve this zoning change?
Thank you, Alder. I think that's a question for Director Stoudt. Director Stoudt, if you can speak to maybe a slightly bigger picture of both what items nine and 49 are, and then to Alder Slack's question of what the implications of the zoning change are.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Alder Slack. I will share screen and, and try to do this with, with one image from our staff report. I want to thank my colleague Chris Wells, who authored this staff report for the Plan Commission. This is a, you know, looking down a site, site view of the block in question. And the dark black line here really outlines the property that we're looking at with items nine and 49 together. So item nine is the rezoning of a few slivers of this property from either planned development, downtown residential to, um, to the UMX or Urban Mixed Use District. So many of the parcels within this approximately one acre, uh, one acre site are already zoned urban mixed use. But what the rezoning before the council this evening would do would be to change the zoning of the existing parcels that are, are zoned in other zoning districts so that the entire site, the entire one acre site has a common zoning district, and that district is urban mixed use. It's a district that's consistent with recommendations in the Conference of Plan and the city's downtown plan. So in a sense, the rezoning is bringing the entire one acre site under one zoning district, urban mixed use. And then item 49 is a certified survey map that actually eliminates all of these existing underlying, underlying lot lines. You can see that this is a somewhat irregularly shaped parcel. There are 10 buildings on the site today. Those would be demolished, as has already been approved by the city's Plan Commission. And then the lots would be combined into one single property by using the certified survey map, which is item 49 before the council this evening. So those are the two items before you. And I think the, the standards for approval that are most relevant have to do with the rezoning of the property. The council needs to find that any rezoning is consistent with the city's Conference of Plan, which this one is. Our, our Conference of Plan recommends, um, you know, downtown core uses for this area, downtown mixed use, uses for this area. And our downtown plan actually recommends high-density residential uses consistent with what's around the area today. So I think, you know, anticipating high-intensity student housing, student-focused housing is, is what was really recommended in the city's downtown plan. Hope that starts to address the, the, the questions that you had, Alder Slack. Let me know if I can address any others.
Thank you, Director Stoudt. Just one follow-up question. What are the implications if we don't pass this? Like what happens?
So if the council would not, uh, you know, vote to approve the, the rezoning and the certified survey map, the project would not be able to move forward. So the, the Plan Commission has already approved, you know, contingent on the council's approval of the rezoning and the certified survey map. The Plan Commission has found the demolition standards and the conditional use standards met, but really without a rezoning of the property to the urban mixed-use district so that it's all in one zoning district, and especially without the removal of the underlying property lines, the applicant wouldn't be able to obtain a, a building permit and, and move forward. I think, you know, the staff recommendation is that, um, all of the, all of the relevant standards for rezonings and the certified survey map, which is more technical, have been met. The Plan Commission, I think, did a lot of heavy lifting related to the conditional use standards and demolition standards. But if the council would, would vote against the rezoning this evening, the project would not be able to move forward.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Govindarajan for the second time.
I quickly want to address why, like, this is not, I want to address a lot of things. It's going to be long, sorry. So why does not, why does the university not do more? It should, like, you're completely right. And I will make it a priority to push the university as much as I can. I'm going to be pretty vague, or like not vague, blunt about this. When it comes to a figure that has 3.5 billion something dollars, I'm not really going to hold back on my words. In the first two weeks of my term, I called out the chancellor on Twitter, and then three days later, I had breakfast with her, which was really awkward. But it was professional, and that is what this job is. I'm going to push the university to do as much as it can. Right now, similar to us on item number nine, they are limited in what they can do. However, on Agenda Item 49, we can vote no on this, and it will, similar to what was just said, the developer will not be able to build here. And I understand that planning staff said that this is consistent with the comprehensive plan. But in this specific situation, I'm going to say that the comprehensive plan is not, um, consistent with what students are asking for. And students live here, students are the community here, and they are the neighbors here. And I have, I am legit, literally not joking. I have talked and spoken to hundreds, multiple hundreds of students. And they see naturally occurring houses here. I believe it's like 18 separate units in a couple fewer buildings. And there, it is demolition of 18 naturally occurring housing, affordable housing units in favor of a couple hundred extremely expensive housing units. And that is not what the community needs. And what I said about, uh, item 49 being able to vote no, that's from Attorney Haas. If I mess that up, please correct me. But for those who don't know the specifics either about this development, there is going to be a rooftop pool that can, you know, Wisconsin weather, you can maybe use for three months, four if you're lucky. Why do we need a pool? There is going to be a gym when the, the NIC owned by UW that students can go to for free is about two blocks away. There is going to be in-unit laundry when, I understand that it's really nice, but students are used to having to take an elevator going downstairs and go into a laundry room. You're going to have to pay for the laundry anyway. Who knows how much that's going to cost? But students don't care about using an elevator to do it. We live in pretty crappy conditions. I don't even have a window in my bedroom. Like, students are used to this. We do not need luxury, and many of us do not want luxury. And that is what this is. I understand that this is a lot. At the very least, what I ask of you is, one, vote no on item 49. And two, if you are on the Urban Design Commission, if you are on the Plan Commission, if you are in any commission that has anything to do with housing, I'm telling you very bluntly, students want affordability. We want, we don't want more housing, just, we don't want just more housing. We want more affordable housing. And that means about $500 to $600 a month for a bed. And that means some amenities might not be there, but honestly, we don't care because we have bigger problems. We care about essays. We care about exams. We care about paying off our thousands in loans. Some of you might still have those loans. So they're worse right now than they were a couple of years ago. Yeah, that's all. And Attorney Haas, if I was wrong about any of that, please correct me, but thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I think we will have the attorney weigh in here.
Thank you. Just to clarify, I think the only correction I would make is that the Alder reversed the two items. So the rezoning item, which is, uh, item nine, that's a purely legislative decision. The council is free to, um, to make a decision on approving or not approving that. Item 49 is a certified survey map. If the property was rezoned properly and the certified survey map application met all of the standards in the statutes and the ordinances regarding land division, lot size, any required dedication, setbacks, things like that, in that case, the applicant would be entitled to approval. And if the council did not approve, you know, the, the applicant could file a lawsuit and ask the court to reverse that decision. But the applicant is not entitled to approval of the rezoning decision. That's purely a legislative decision. So if the property is not rezoned, then, uh, they're not necessarily entitled to approval of the certified survey map.
Thank you. Alder Field is next.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to chime in, being fairly familiar with the data characterizing the demand for housing downtown. Over the last few years, the University of Wisconsin-Madison has increased its admitted class sizes, bigger freshman classes each year for the past several year, a couple of years now. In the fall of 2020, there were 45,500 students, uh, coming to campus. Fall of '21, 49,900 students coming to campus. And fall of '22, there were 49,886 students coming to campus. This trend will continue as the new, bigger freshman classes move their way through the four-year track because each incoming class is bigger than the classes that are graduating. This makes me worry about what happens when there aren't enough houses coming, uh, isn't enough housing coming online and landlords get to name their prices. I'm similarly very frustrated with the state of affordability, having been a Pell Grant-receiving college student with several tens of thousands of dollars of student loans still. I don't see other ways around this. As a result, I'm going to be supporting both of these motions.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Vitter.
I just had a partial response to Alder Slack and Alder Govindarajan's questions about what the university is doing. And I would really encourage my fellow Alders to engage with the West Campus District Plan. There will be an open house tomorrow at the New Baki Recreational Facility, starting at 4:30 PM. There is a 10, 20, and 30-year plan for the west end of campus, which includes quite a bit of housing. Some of it may not all be directed towards students, but some of it will be. So just want to encourage everyone to engage with that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rummel.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Director Stoudt. Hi, Heather. Can you tell us how many units are being demolished? Or what the, like, the bedroom count? If you can give a rough estimate. You know, the new proposals for 232 units, how many units are we losing? And if you know how many, the occupancy of what we're losing, that would be helpful.
Yeah, that's a great question. I, I have the units. There, there is 135-unit building among those proposed for demolition. And, but the total number of units is approximately 70, I think 72, units within the 10 properties. I don't have the number of bedrooms in those, but they are comprised of a 35-unit building, a 12-unit building, and then several smaller, you know, two-to-five-unit buildings. The proposed 12-story building has 232 units ranging from studios to five bedrooms. And I believe there are 680-some bedrooms in the, in the proposed building.
So we don't really know, like, the equivalent, if there's several hundred people, you know, in the 72 units because of, you know, several bedrooms, people sharing space, et cetera?
I, I would, I would think that it would be far fewer than several hundred. I, I, I don't have the number of bedrooms, but among those 72 units, um, most of them are going to be relatively small units. Like in the 35-unit building, those would be small units. They wouldn't be five-unit or five-bedroom units. And so, you know, I, I would guess, um, I would estimate, you know, 150 to 200 perhaps would be a, would be an estimated occupancy. But that is, that's purely a, an educated guess.
I have kind of an academic question, and hopefully you'll follow with me. But we talk a lot about the missing middle housing. Is it fair to say that these, these 10 buildings are embodying that missing middle? And you, I know you might end up telling me the zoning for downtown plan, but I will get to that question in a moment.
Sure. I, I do think that many of these buildings are at the scale that we would consider the missing middle. The caveat to that, which maybe you'll get to, is that, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to promote ways of integrating missing-middle housing in lower-density residential areas or next to lower-density residential areas, and not so much in the, the downtown where the plans recommend high-intensity residential, and that's what's surrounding it. But, uh, but yes, I, I think what's there today at the scale of it would be the missing middle.
And, okay, here's my way of getting to the question about the downtown plan. Now, I was around back then, so I remember being on, I think I actually maybe was on the Plan Commission when we discussed that. But at some point, we decided, we as the Plan Commission and the city, and I'll just put the blunt words, to clear-cut the downtown for more density. And, and again, that's my words. But at some point, you know, now we're running into like, you know, the dwelling, the units per acre and the density, is, is it bringing us what we want? And will the, the, the Plan Commission update, take a look at any of those questions?
The Plan Commission update, I'm, I'm not sure.
Are you scheduled to update the downtown plan anytime soon?
It won't.
Um, probably about four to six years out. Actually, yeah, I think four, four years out. We, we would be approaching the, the update to the 2012 downtown plan.
Okay, thanks. That's all the questions I have at this time.
Sure.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer Burris.
So, um, yeah, I think that we're talking about two different things. You know, with Alder Rummel saying, and, um, Bit of Beer, and Bennett, MGR, and talking about two different things. Are we, we're talking about a revolution because, uh, the prices of housing, no matter if we fill them all today, it's not gonna, it's not gonna go down. If that's just a, it's just not. But yet, we need housing. So the question is, what are we to do? And what are we going to do? Because that's really what's at, what, what I think that MGR and, uh, uh, Bennett are getting at. And I don't, I disagree that it's just a student problem. It's a, it's a city-wide problem, okay? I don't think that most adults think that, uh, you know, 12, 1300, 2,000 is, um, you know, cheaper rent. You know, we're struggling too. And even adults with good-paying jobs, we're struggling. And it's going to continue until we do something about it. Now, the question is, is this the time and the place? I don't know. If we look, we can review the 10, the 20-year plan, the 30-year plan. The bottom line is, we don't have enough housing, and nobody can afford to live here. But we're going to meet all the standards. It's the same issue that they do in policing, right? The standards were set. You're always going to meet the standards because if I, my life, if I fear, if I, follow me on this, if I'm a police officer, and nothing against police officers, I like police officers, but I have a job that I walk on the door, and of course, I'm afraid for my life. Is this a reset for the standards? I don't even know. Is this the right place to reset the standards? If we send this message of Madison's unaffordable and we're not going to just build away, will things change? I don't know. In four to six years, will we make a difference? Will we start tackling rents when they're now at 2,500, 3,000? I used to live in LA. And my same place that used to be sixteen-hundred is now four-thousand dollars. And it's not, it wasn't like decades ago. So that's what we're up against. Are we going to do a revolution? The same thing, I would argue, takes place with COVID-19, the foreclosure crisis, the environmental crisis, building buildings on top of, of buildings in spaces where it's second-generation land. The cost of living is not keeping up with what we're making, what people are making. And we know that, so. I don't know. I don't have the answer. I'm just asking questions.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett for the second time.
Yes. Thank you so much to my colleagues. I wanted to answer the question, why isn't the university doing more? And kind of hopefully adding to what was said by Alder Govindarajan and Alder Vitterver. In all my talks with the university, I've come to learn and actually appreciate that the university literally can, is, cannot do much. We just saw in the state budget that the legislature denied university funding of, like, a hundred-and-ninety-seven million dollars because they don't believe that we should have diversity, equity, and inclusion programs. So we cannot, they, the legislature has literally said, we will not allow you to build another, like, public dorm, and part of that is because they don't believe in the E.I. programs. So that all plays into how the university doesn't have places to put people. We're tripling up, putting four people, five people into a small dorm room, um, in some cases, and the legislature does not give a shit. And I'm going to curse because I can, and I curse because I care.
Just remind us again that we collectively have decided not to use foul language on the floor and to address each other by our titles, not our first names. Thank you.
I curse because I care. And so that's why we're in this problem, but also, I always say that this housing crisis, this affordable student housing crisis is not just a university problem, it's just as much a city problem, and it's just as much a state problem. And I want to really uplift what my follow colleague over on my other side was alluding to about, um, the preserving naturally occurring affordable housing. I think it is just as important, and those types of units, I would, one could argue, are even more impactful because of the significant, like, lack of affordable housing. And, um, and we'll, we'll see what this, what could be done with the West Campus Plan, but I think on the city side, it's important for us to recognize that in our comprehensive plan process, student housing doesn't come up one time in the entire comprehensive plan. That, to me, tells me students weren't at the table, except whoever was the district aid alder at the time. So if we're making decisions based off of people, of rep, of population that was not even represented, I think one thing that we need to do is look at our zoning code and have people that will support our, um, amending our zoning code. We're not in a shortage of pools here. We don't need any more pools, um, in these types of buildings. It's a, we don't, um, you know, we could look at the type of building materials we have, the, the parking requirements, or, um, how much we're pushing to have put in parking, um, into these units. So supporting our zoning code and supporting amending our comprehensive planning process and keeping in mind who isn't here at the table.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Verbeer.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Are we on discussion for sure? If there are others in the queue, I'll yield if there are other questions of Director Stoudt.
There are a number of others in the queue, but I believe that we are back and forth. So go ahead.
Thank you. Discussion. So as the alder of the district, where this proposed development would occur, I share the frustration of my colleagues regarding the lack of affordability. I very much do. From the first day that the applicant met with me, I mentioned affordability to them. In that very first conversation, they shared with me that this is a market rate proposal, that would remain a market rate proposal, and they were sticking to that. Unfortunately, that's indeed the case these many, many, many months later. The same applicant is very interested and willing to provide lower-cost housing for students if we, in return, provide a density bonus for that. That's what we did with the current project under construction now by this applicant in the three-hundred-block estate street, and what they intend to do with another proposal that is just across the four-hundred-block of West Johnson Street from this site. Unfortunately, there was no density needed by this applicant to make the numbers work for them here. I have to tell you, it's further frustrating that when I work with out-of-state developers, many of them say that they are familiar with providing some level of affordability because they have to work with inclusionary, inclusionary zoning ordinances in many other jurisdictions where they work, and that is the case with this applicant. I remember from that first conversation, and I've worked with them for years, going back to the hub, and the James Proposals, uh, they use the example of California, where college campuses in California, they're used to working with inclusionary zoning requirements that are imposed upon them. I just want to add my voice to the chorus tonight, that it is so frustrating, I believe for all of us, Mayor, as a body here, that we don't have that opportunity in Wisconsin. Some of us, maybe it's just you and I, Mayor, were supportive, or were, were here when we had inclusionary zoning on the books for those few years that we did before the State Supreme Court ruled it unconstitutional, um, rent control, which is prohibited by our statutes. And so it's just frustrating beyond end. And with apologies to my colleagues that serve as Plan Commissioners, because they heard me say this in my Plan Commission testimony last week, I do believe that this is naturally occurring lower-cost housing, maybe not naturally occurring affordable housing, but naturally occurring low-cost housing that would be replaced by this proposal. And it is frustrating. I will try not to use that word much more in my remarks here, but it is indeed very frustrating. I'm very familiar with the units that are proposed to be demolished that the Plan Commission already granted demolition permits for. There are many of them. I would estimate that they total about one-hundred-and-twenty-five beds, to answer an earlier question posed. And, and compared to when this, if approved and built, is finally marketed to prospective tenants, will certainly be exceedingly higher in rent. For one thing, the applicants do not propose, if this proposal is approved, do not propose to break ground on it until a year from now, the summer of 2024. With the two-year construction cycle, this development would not open if approved and built until late summer of 2026. I can only imagine what the rental market will be like then. I can only imagine what rents, market rents might be then for student housing. Of course, I wish that we weren't in this predicament. Of course, on the one hand, it's great to have fifty thousand UW students here. Many of us were, fit that characterization, and at least one of us still, still does. But that has brought so many unintended consequences, as was already mentioned. I remember in my Plan Commission conversation with the Commissioners, I mentioned that with fifty thousand UW students, we clearly have a shortage of student-oriented housing in our community. We absolutely, it goes without saying, full stop, have an affordable housing crisis for students as well. And this proposal misses the mark in that regard in, in all those ways. You can argue supply and demand, and in the summer of 2026, I hope that the applicants are correct that with all these additional, which will be over seven-hundred new beds, if approved and built, these over seven-hundred new beds will help with the tremendous problem of supply and demand. I think that's undeniably true, but moreover, I pray that it will actually do something relating to the affordability crisis that we find ourselves in. At the Plan Commission, I shared with the Commissioners that I am supportive of this application, and I continue to be supportive. And I say that in large part because I'm very familiar with the standards that are codified in Chapter Twenty-Eight. I'm very familiar with the statute that we're compelled to follow. And as Director Stoudt earlier testified, and as the staff report goes into great detail, I have to agree with the professional city planners that, and with the Plan Commission, which recommends this rezoning to us unanimously tonight, that the standards are clearly met in our adopted comp plan, specifically in the adopted downtown plan from 2012. As was already mentioned, this is where the policymakers at the time chose to encourage density. Why is it that this applicant is proposed within literally a stone's throw from each other, three large student housing developments? It's because the downtown height map allows for ten- and twelve-story height, and with the recent affordable housing ordinance that this council adopted unanimously in March, while the previous council technically adopted in March, uh, this applicant, at this point, is seeking fourteen stories across the street from this site, but with it will provide some affordability, thank goodness, if that proposal advances. So in my humble opinion, and we all have to come to this conclusion on our own, each and every one of us, I do believe that, that this application is consistent with the adopted comp plan, with the downtown plan, that it is, cannot be argued that it's contrary to health, safety, and welfare of the community. And so I believe that the zoning map amendment standards are met, and, and obviously, the planning staff and, and Commission concurred unanimously. And as it relates to the CSM, the Certified Survey Map, the statutes, um, more or less say that those are technical standards for land divisions and that, that it, that they have to be approved, so I, so that, you know, is, is already been addressed. Although I'm not excited about this because of the lack of affordability, I think, unfortunately, for those of you that are concerned about this and not enthusiastic about it, it is an overall good for the community because we need this additional density. Students need it. The pure buildings to this, if approved and built, do not have vacancies in them. Yes, you can argue that that goes to the affordability of the student body today and graduating with tremendous debt, um, but the reality is, is, is that we need the additional density adjacent to campus. That's the reality of fifty thousand university students, and the fact that the institution did not plan for that is most unfortunate. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox.
Yeah, I, I guess I, I realize that we're all sensitive to our housing crisis. We all have to be sensitive to that. Not, not only lack of units, but affordable units. I was listening to Mike Ha, so I'm assuming what he was saying is, if, for example, we approve, well, one of my questions was, what impact does it have if we approve the zoning? But if we don't approve the survey, it sounds like that puts us at some risk of lawsuit, so, or at least because once the zoning's approved, I guess, like what, uh, Mike, you said, is just technical standards after that? Is that true? From what I hear, pretty much? What's the, yeah, because, because if we approve the zoning, then you're saying that it pretty much opens the door for the technical, uh, survey.
Right. The Certified Survey Map is the more technical.
If we don't approve it, they probably will kind of move forward on it.
Right. And if I could just, maybe, maybe I slightly misspoke earlier. I mean, even the rezoning decision, as Director Stoudt, I think, implied, I mean, if the, if the rezoning request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, um, you know, there is also some legal risk if we do not identify a, um, something that it doesn't meet in the, in the comprehensive plan, and it's denied for that purpose.
Okay.
And of course, the comprehensive plan does not, you know, discuss rent or affordability of units.
One of my thoughts were, if we didn't, if we approved the zoning, but the properties that are there, you know, had different zoning, would that be some kind of problem? Because now you've, I, you know, changed the zoning for some properties that you may not build, you know, to suit. But anyway, understanding that, um, it sounds like the downtown plan is consistent with that, is consistent with the comp plan, and, you know, I have to say this, you know, my daughter stayed in the James. She paid six hundred bucks, I paid the other five. I'm just going to be honest with you. You know, that's how it went. Students are, students make choices based on what they can afford. A lot of them live in Thirteenth District, live in Fourteenth District because of affordability. They do. You, you, you live where you can afford to live. You make those choices. Obviously, the more affluent students can live closer to campus, the other ones hop a bus down Park Street or whatever and get there, and it's literally minutes. Let's be honest, it's literally minutes away. So sometimes it's just convenience. I'm just being honest. I've had four university students graduate, lived in all kinds of housing on campus, and trust me, they figure it out. So at the end of the day, I just think, we just got to keep dealing with this affordable housing issue. I'm, I'm totally sensitive, uh, to students, because I paid for a lot of student houses over the years, trust me, out of pocket. Trust me, five kids, all got college degrees. Trust me, I know how much it costs. But at the end of the day, that's where we are. And until we get more units, until we get more affordable units, that's where we are. So I definitely don't want to put us in a situation where we have plans here that are, they are, this proposal is consistent with those plans. We say no, that's a problem. And once we make those management decisions of density in downtown, and it's a lot of density downtown, let's just be honest, that's what it is. And so that's my little two cents. You know, I'm probably going to support the proposal.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I appreciate what my colleague who, from the twelfth, who's normally sitting to my right, mentioned, bringing up the word "revolution," which is probably a kind of a phrase that the developers don't want us to be talking about right now, but, um, because we are talking about a change in philosophy and ethos regarding housing. But let's be real, we live under capitalism. Housing is not a human right, and the system that we live in, as much as we would like it to be, because ninety-nine percent of the housing in this country is provided by private developers who get financing from banks, who are looking for a return on their investment, and profit is the motive. It is competitive. for a return on their investment, and profit is the motive. It is a competitive marketplace. It's not a cooperative marketplace. The developers are looking to put in a ridiculous swimming pool on the roof and a gym two blocks away from where one already exists, because there are people who will pay a high price for that. They're not considering the interest of lower-income or modest-income students because they don't have to. If we had an inclusionary zoning, if we were a state that allowed that, if we had an ethos in our laws, they would have to abide by that, and they, within those parameters, would optimize against that and come up with a different plan. But they don't have to, and that's unfortunate. I disagree with my colleagues to suggest that we should oppose housing if it's not affordable. If we did that, we would not, our problems would get even worse. Well, it's true, we can't build ourselves out of this. We can't, the answer is not just build, build, build. But the alternative to that is subsidized housing. And there's a limit to how much we can do that. There are actual limits to how much money we can put towards subsidized housing. That we can look at, we can look at things like floating affordable housing bonds, the cities in North Carolina have done, where they raised $100 million over a five-year period to subsidize housing. If we're serious about that kind of thinking, then that involves borrowing, that involves floating bonds, it involves potentially raising property taxes even more for our residents. Nothing comes for free. So if we're at the point at this council, because it's not just a student housing issue, that we're not going to pass a single development unless it's affordable, we're going to be stuck, because it's the shortage of housing that causes those rents to go up. And Madison this past year had the highest rate of increase in rents in the entire country. And that should get us our attention. I'm upset with you guys. I think you could have done better in terms of replacing the naturally occurring affordable housing with units that somehow or another provided affordability, even if you're not required. And I'd like you to consider going back and doing so. That would be cooperative capitalism, not competitive capitalism. You have the ability, within the money that you're making, to provide that as a solution to this problem. When you tear down naturally occurring affordable housing, you should replace it in kind, and not just say that we're building more housing, and that will somehow or another temper the rate of increase, and that's our solution. You should responsibly answer the call, that when you tear down 170 bedrooms of naturally occurring affordable housing, you ought to do something to replace it, something serious. That's cooperative capitalism. You guys are doing just competitive capitalism, doing whatever the marketplace will allow you to do. And we can't do anything to stop you, except vote this down. And if we vote this down, we run the risk that you could perhaps sue us. I really think that...
Just remind you to address your remarks to the chair, please.
I have a bad habit sometimes of not doing that. So, if Alders are serious about a revolution and about a change in priorities, then we need to get busy in thinking about what we're going to do, and looking what other cities are doing in terms of raising the kinds of funds that provide the subsidies. It's subsidies that will make a difference. Encouraging market-rate developers to go back to the drawing board and draw upon some of those tools to be able to provide those subsidies. I'll probably vote in favor of this, but I'll do so with utmost regret, because I do not think that ultimately this is the way that we need to proceed in our city. But we're stuck. If we don't build more housing, the problem gets worse. The rents aren't going to come down, but maybe they won't increase quite as dramatically. But that's, that's a pretty, that's like weak tea. That is not a solution to our crisis right now. And you guys need to do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Gomindarajan for the third time. I'll just remind us collectively that we generally limit ourselves to speaking twice. Alder?
I'm sorry, I'm used to student council. The rule was three. I did not know that. This will be the last time I speak. It's been said that students have, students need this housing, that students want this housing. The two students, the two most current, the one current student and the one most recently graduated student here, we don't, we don't agree with that. Let us speak for ourselves. I know you guys love telling other people what they want, because that's how I felt as a student before I got on this council. And right now, I'm feeling the exact same thing. So let me speak for myself, and let me speak for my constituents, and the people who come to me when they feel like they can't go to other people. We do not want this. We have never wanted this. And then it was said that students have a choice of where they live. There's a very certain law that's been discussed recently in the state of Wisconsin. It was created in 1849. Take your guesses what that law is. Why are people so against it? Is it because the law that, the abortion law, that's what I'm talking about. It affects people who can give birth, who happened to not have been able to vote or have a choice in the law when it was created. When the comprehensive plan was created, just a couple years ago, students did not have a voice in that. Maybe the one district aide, Alder, did, however long ago that was. So, if you are in this room, and you have in the past said, wow, we should bring back Roe v. Wade, or we should allow abortion access in Wisconsin, because the current 1849 law is oppressive, it is terrible, all those negative words, then the same morals apply here. And if you are voting in favor of this, but you are doing it with the utmost regret, that is very similar to giving your sympathies and prayers when there's a gun shooting. That's how we feel. I'm sorry. Like, that is genuinely how I feel. And I want to make clear, I am addressing certain things directly, but I will not take your votes personally. But I'm going to be very blunt and honest about this, because I understand the atmosphere in this room, and I understand this is the nature of the job. So I want to be clear, you're all still my friends, and I love you all. But...
[laughter]
So, here's the thing. I am asking you guys to vote against Agenda Number Nine. This time, I got that right. That changes the zoning from planned development to urban mixed use. And I don't think this is against the principles of like inclusionary zoning, because right now, it's not inclusionary zoning. Planned development is not inclusionary zoning. It is planned development, I guess. It just happens to have houses that are more affordable than what is currently being proposed. So, with that in mind, I really think that students would want you to vote against this. And then it was brought up that students, like the university keeps admitting people, and this is just going to be a worse problem. Six to eight months ago, the university gave its confirmation to the student council that it is going to admit a lot less people this time around, and that will be a continuing thing. So I'm sorry, I should have said that earlier. The upcoming year, there will not be as many freshmen admitted. The university is also working really hard to the College of Engineering, which has a couple thousand students enrolled in it. The graduation time is four and a half years. They're trying to bring that down by creating new buildings, which we've, most of us have heard about. And that, when that happens, students will leave earlier, or at least have the option of leaving earlier instead of staying longer. So the university is doing what it can within its limits to make sure that it does not over-admit that students leave earlier, that it attempts to solve this housing crisis as much as it can. And we can keep questioning the university about why doesn't it not do more, but why do we not do more? Because we can, we can do zoning. I believe Alder Latimer Burris asked, like, what can we do about this? And I want to address this. Similar to what Alder Bennett said, zoning changes is a great place to start. That's something that the state does not limit us as much compared to other things. Zoning changes is a great start. We can start discussions with developer much earlier, and we can be more strict about it. We can be much more clear about what our constituents really need, because that will make the difference. It is, you guys, sorry, Chair, I guess developers are voluntarily having to agree with us. And it is up to us as Alders to push that more harder. And we need to get the community more involved, because when this comprehensive plan was created, I, like, some of you were here during that. Were there students speaking? I will yield like 30 seconds for a quick answer on that.
That's not how it works, Alder.
Okay, sorry. Still used to student council rules. So, last thing I will say is, this is inequity. If you vote in favor of this, this is an inequity. You are getting rid of 170-something affordable beds in favor of 700-something really expensive beds. You, this is, if you care about inequity at all, this is something that should matter to you. You are kicking out students who will become homeless, who will have to drop out of school, who will have a lot harder time ever getting to the level of life that you are at. This has a real consequence, and I understand that city council might not have been the direct cause of that, but we can be a direct solution or provide part of a solution. So this will be the last time I talk, but that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Just want to remind us again that we collectively agreed to operating rules that limit you to speaking twice and for a total of 10 minutes. I'm not timing you, but I think perhaps I should have been. Alder Rommel for the second time.
Thank you, Mayor. First time speaking as part of discussion.
That's fair, Alder, yes.
Just to be clear, I just want to bring to everyone's attention that the demolition standards are something you can look at. Are they met? Now, when you read the staff report, it talks about the, that the demolition proposal is consistent with the statement of purpose. And I know the city attorney will say, oh, the statement of purpose is not the main thing. But it's there in our ordinances, which talks about the health, prosperity, safety, and welfare of the city of Madison. So, apply that look at these, this proposal. Is it, is this providing the health, prosperity, safety, and welfare of the future residents of this development? And I think, at least if you believe Alder Gomindarajan and his student survey, they would say no. So, you know, I'm not sure how you weigh that, but I think it's a legitimate case to make, you know, if you decided not to support this. It didn't meet the standards for demolition. You know, you can read the staff report, and it says, oh, it could be found, but it also might not be found. The way this, if you become a student of the plan department's memos, you kind of read between some of the language. So when they say it could be met, that doesn't mean it has to be met, or it's like 100%, a slam dunk should be met. So, it's up to you to read that and decide if this is something, a way for you to look at this proposal and decide, like, this rent isn't really going to serve the future students of the intended area. This character, if you look at the downtown plan, talks about intense student housing, but we're not making it for most students. We're making it for the 1% of students. So, are we really serving that standard? Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett for the third time.
Yes. Thank you. And I'm on my last time speaking. I know, I appreciate you all listening to our soapboxes. And I've seen my colleagues fight for things that are important for their constituents. And I hope that you can all recognize that this is something extremely important to our constituents. I wanted to kind of bounce off of the last piece of inequity my colleague to the, which was left of me, was talking about. And this idea that you can afford where you live, or you take what you can afford. And I just view that as conforming to the systems of redlining that are placed upon us. Because that's basically what we're asking students to do. Who are the people living in these luxury, high-rise developments? Rich, white kids. Who are the people forced to the other side of the street, to the less fortunate side of the street? Black and brown students. Who are the students with higher dropout rates, lower academic performance, more hurdles that you have to jump through in total? Black and brown students. This is basically just conforming to redlining and institutional racism that is built into our system. And I will also note some of the things that the neighborhood committee noted. One thing is that they noted policymakers using the three Ps of housing. One, production of new housing at all income levels, especially affordable housing. Two, protection of current residents to avoid displacement. And three, preservation of existing housing, of existing housing affordable for lower and middle income residents. They further noted in their Neighborhood Steering Committee report that this development fails to meet requirements in terms of sustainability. The design overall does not bring anything of greatness to the character of the community. I, it's late, and the report is great, and I cannot reverberate it the best it says right here. But I completely agree with my colleague to the back of me, that it is extremely disappointing, especially when, you know, these developers are, should be, well, I don't know, have developed in Madison before, and know this is what we care about and talk about, and there's no corporate responsibility shown here. And I think that is incredibly important to Madison. And I encourage my colleagues to not allow ourselves to get complacent, to not allow ourselves to get complacent with the institutional racism, this inequity, and overall laws that are thrown upon us because of this state legislature. So, thank you for listening to us, and know that we are speaking on behalf of the thousands of students and thousands of constituents that care about this issue.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers for the second time.
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate what's been shared. And Alder Rommel, I appreciate your direct, your statement, your words directing us to, again, kind of our values, a value statement that's embodied in the comp plan. And, you know, we're reminded at times here at council, we have a colleague who reminds us of our values quite frequently, Alder Madison, that we should vote our values. We do often say we need more housing at all price levels. And there is a shortage from, apparently, from what I've heard from staff reports, at the two ends of the spectrum, of kind of the market-rate luxury housing and the, and the really kind of low-income, 30% to 50% AMI. But I'm troubled by this, the same thing I was troubled before, and that's the displacement. It's one thing for me to agree to a market-rate project, because not all projects moving forward can be affordable. And we are not going to be in a position as colleagues to veto projects simply because they're unaffordable. But if there were 170 beds, or how many units in District 13 that were naturally occurring affordable housing, that were being proposed to be demolished, to build luxury apartments, I would be voting against that. And my constituents would be voting, asking me to vote against that. That's not what they would want. They would want that naturally occurring affordable housing to remain, and if it were to be demolished... to be demolished, they'd want some level of affordability to replace those units. So I'm going to have to vote no on number nine. I'm going to ask my colleagues to also vote no on nine and send these developers back to the drawing board. Maybe they will come back with a project which recognizes that displacement in this circumstance is not a solution that we as a body are willing to accept.
Can we address one comment?
No.
So I'm going to stop here. I'm going to ask you all to vote no on nine, and let's continue to talk about this very serious issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak. I think this is a sufficiently complicated and contentious issue that we will have two roll call votes. The first on item nine and the second on item 49. So just so everyone is clear, the first vote is to adopt item nine, which is the rezoning. The second vote is to adopt item 49, which is the certified survey map. So on item nine, all those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll. Alder Field?
Aye.
Figueroa Cole?
Aye.
Aye. Govendrajan?
No.
Yes.
Aye.
Latimer Burris?
No.
No. Madison?
No.
No. Martinez Rutherford?
No.
No. Miazze? No. Rommel?
No.
No. Slack?
No.
No. Tischler?
Yes.
Yes, aye. Revere?
Aye.
Vitterver?
Aye.
Wajalias excused. Bennett?
No.
No. Conklin?
No.
No. Curry?
No.
No. Duncan?
No.
No. Evers?
No.
No, and coming back to Alder Harrington McKinney? That is six ayes and 13 nos. With six ayes, item nine fails. We'll go on to item 49, which again is the certified survey map. All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll. I'm sorry? Yes, Alder Govendrajan, a question?
Now that item nine has been voted no, is there a legal requirement, legal expectation for us to vote one way or another on item 49?
The two items are separate items, Alder. The standards for a certified survey map don't change based on the zoning.
Okay, thank you.
Alder Slack?
I'm sorry, but I do just want to understand 49. I mean, this is just a certified survey map showing just what the boundary lines are and everything. It's not, if you vote yes for this, you're not endorsing the development in any way, just the fact that this map was created and it's accurate and so forth.
The action that is implied in approving a certified survey map is the going from separate individual properties to creating one property. So right now, there are multiple properties that have different zonings. The certified survey map will create them into one property with now different zonings. Good? Good. All right, so on item 49, all those, Alder Latimer Burris?
I am so sorry. I know we were about to do it, but we're trying to understand this with the action that's just been taken. So if we could just break it down in more simple terms, simple language, you know. What I heard is that, what I heard Attorney Haas say is that it meets the standard, or whenever it was written. And that's what we're agreeing to, is it meets the standard, right?
Attorney Haas?
That's correct. Whether it meets the standards in the statutes and the ordinances for division, or in this case, combining the lots, I'm not sure if Director Soder wants to add anything, be more familiar with the project and the plan commission recommendations, but that's the purpose of the vote on the certified survey map.
Alder, does that answer your question?
Yeah, well, so I want to get into, yeah, sort of not, well, yes, yes, it does. Attorney Haas, thank you very much. But I also want to make sure that, like, so I'm just going to talk simply because, I mean, there's no, there's no other way to speak. We don't want the city to get sued, right, by creating, you know, discord, but the council just spoke about the seriousness of affordable housing and the direction that it's going. Any way you want to cut it, you can cut it. We can talk, we can talk in legal language, and I can go there, we can get down into the statute and talk all day, we extend the legal thesaurus. But the bottom line is, is that this is not going to create a situ, will this create a situation for the city where it's just talking about item number 49, where, like, it's incompatible? Am I making sense?
Alder, I believe what this-
I want to say very simple on the language. I'm trying not to get complex.
Alder, I believe what the city attorney is saying is that the item 49, a certified survey map, is a relatively simple decision that should be made on the basis of the standards, and that in this case, the staff report indicates that the standards have been met. Seeing no other Alders in the queue, the item is 49, certified survey map. It's been moved and seconded to adopt. All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll. Alder Field?
Aye.
Figueroa Cole?
Aye.
Aye. Govendrajan?
No.
No. Harrington McKinney?
Aye.
Knox? Aye. Latimer Burris? Aye. Madison?
No.
No. Martinez Rutherford?
Aye.
No. Miazze?
No.
No. Rommel?
No.
No. Slack?
No.
No. Tischler?
Aye.
No. Revere?
Aye.
No. Vitterver?
Aye.
No. Wajalias excused. Bennett?
No.
No. Conklin?
Can you come back to me?
Yes, I can come back to you. Curry?
No.
No. Duncan?
No.
No. Evers?
Aye.
Aye, and Alder Conklin?
No.
That is 11 ayes and eight nos. With 11 ayes, that item passes. And we will go on to item 16. Item 16 is Legisstar 78333 declaring the city of Madison to be a sanctuary for trans and non-binary individuals. On item six, oh, I'm sorry, Alder Field? No? Okay. Alder Curry, can I have a motion on item 16, please? Move to adopt. Through a second. Moved and seconded to adopt item 16. Are there questions? Is there discussion? Is there any objection to recording an enthusiastic aye vote? There's no objection, we'll record an enthusiastic aye vote. Thank you, Alder. Martinez Rutherford. I would just note for the record that that was the substitute that we adopted. That brings us to item 18. Item 18 is Legisstar 78148 amending the public health budget and authorizing a contract with PACE Analytical Services for the analysis of PFAS and private drinking water samples. On item 18, Alder Curry, a motion, please.
Is, I'm sorry, I don't have the consent agenda form in front of me, but is it to return to lead?
Yeah, the recommendation is to approve.
Okay.
To adopt.
Move to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt item 18. Alder Knox?
Thank you. The one question I had about this is it talks about testing of the different wells, private wells. Do we have, do the staff have any idea of where these wells are located? Kind of curious, or is this citywide?
We have John Hausbeck here from Public Health with us.
Yes, so the contract that we're asking for authority to sign is a contract that we need to spend money that the county actually put into our 2023 budget. The county had, as part of their portion of the public health budget, added $100,000 to test private wells of low-income households throughout the county. Since it's specifically county funds, those wells would not be in the city of Madison. However, the amount of the resolution before you actually mentions 204, 204,500 as the amount of the contract. And that's the part where we have to revise our budget to allow for a contract of that size. The reason why we are asking for that ability is so that we can pass along the essentially discount that we were able to obtain through the competitive bid process whereby we selected PACE Analytical. So that the opportunity for other individuals with private wells that want to have a PFAS test for about $100 less than the going rate from either the state lab or some other private labs in the area, that essentially allows us to, under our contract, receive money from individuals wanting to test in the amount that the lab would charge us for that test. So our budget is essentially a wash because we would receive that money and pay that money out immediately to the lab, but we had to account for it in the budget, so that's why the budget amendment.
Okay, but you're saying this will really be private wells outside of the city of Madison, pretty much?
Pretty much. There's really very few private wells within the city of Madison. I don't have a number, but compared to the fact that most people in the, outside of the city of Madison are on private wells and very few are in the city.
Are there, are there any, like, in the old town parcels that might be impacted that are now in the city?
Yes, there, if I'm, my recollection is that there are probably a few hundred private wells within the city of Madison. That might be an overestimate. I can't remember exactly, but it's a small number. There are some that were former town properties, specifically in the Arboretum area, where there were some private wells in there that are now part of the city.
So would they benefit from this program, from these resources?
They would benefit from the fact that we're able to get the contract to the lower testing rate.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer Burris?
Yeah, so I just want, just ask, it sounds to me like we're just being a pass-through, right? A pass-through. We're acting as a pass-through. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rommel?
I don't have a question for John Hausbeck, but just a comment for there.
There's no one else in the queue, Alder.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to add my name as a cosponsor. I should have done that sooner. Secondly, having like tracked the PFAS, and you know, our water utility checks every well, but I remember when I was starting to study this, public health, of course, deals with the larger area than just the city, and the issue of private wells was quite clearly unaddressed. So I think this is really an important tool for people to make sure they know what their water quality is, and I hope people support it. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak. Item 18 has been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item 18. And that will take us to item 37. Item 37 is Legisstar 77807, a substitute authorizing an amendment of the contract between the city of Madison and the Community Action Coalition for South Central Wisconsin to provide housing stability services using federal emergency rental assistance funds to, for use in providing housing navigation and support services to community development authority clients and authorizing the execution of a contract. On item 37, Alder Curry, a motion, please. Move to adopt. Moved and seconded to adopt. Alder Knox?
Yeah, just wanted to make the council members aware that I think it's important that we have transparency. So I have identified a lot of these items that have financial implications to it because I think it's important that our constituents know the decisions we're making relative to, you know, funds that we're using. So I don't know why, you know, these things aren't identified originally in the consent agenda, but, so you kind of know why I'm bringing that up. So I have no other questions on this item. Thank you.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? We'll record a unanimous vote in favor, which, with deep thanks to Mr. O'Keefe and Ms. Rhodes for sitting here all night in case there was a question. Alder Miazze?
Can you add my name as a sponsor, too?
Alder Miazze will be added as a sponsor to item 37.
Thank you.
Next item is item 39. Item 39 is Legisstar 78111, awarding funds from CDBG through CDD's capital improvement for nonprofit housing program to six different nonprofit housing providers. On item 39, President Curry, a motion, please. Move to adopt. Moved and seconded to adopt item 39. Alder Knox?
Again, I appreciate the opportunity to address this financial issue so that my constituents are aware of the decisions we're making. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I'm tempted, but I'm going to refrain. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item 39 with the same thanks. And go on to item number 43. Item 43 is Legisstar 78136, authorizing the city to participate in negotiations and, if necessary, arbitration with Dane County regarding the county's development of a proposed landfill, creating the landfill negotiating team committee, authorizing the mayor to appoint members of said committee. On item 43, President Curry, a motion, please. Move to adopt. Moved and seconded to adopt item 43. Alder Knox?
Yeah, on this particular issue, I do have some comments and questions. I guess is there staff that can address the question relative to this?
Yes, Attorney Haas can address your questions.
Okay. So many of you might not be aware, but historically, the Yahrar Golf Course has been a golf course that several black golfers have participated in for years. So one of the questions I have on this issue is, given the amount of change to this golf course, do we know what kind of impact it would have on actual, you know, the availability of golfers to play, or is this part of- Or is this part of the site that, is this part of the site that, you know, won't impact, won't impact the actual golf course?
Thank you, Alder. I don't think we have park staff with us at this point, but I can take a stab at your question if that's all right. This plan to sell a portion of the Yhara Hills, Yhara Hills site to the county for the long-term use as a landfill is actually part of the plan to reinvest in Yhara Hills. It will have fewer holes, but it will have better golf in the long term. And I would direct Alders to the report of the Golf Task Force that examined, this was pre-pandemic, when our golf enterprise was experiencing some fairly serious financial issues. That task force recommended a reduction in the number of holes overall and reinvestment into the remaining holes. And so we've done that at the Glen. This sets up Yhara Hills to have a similar long-term investment. The other two courses, we also are having similar conversations, so you should expect to see more on those in the relatively short term, I think. But this, there's no intention to remove golf from Yhara Hills. It will shrink the site, reduce the number of holes, but make it a better course.
Okay, do, does this task force, did they look at some racial impact analysis related to that?
Yes, it was absolutely noted that this is a particularly popular course with African-American folks, and that's part of why the recommendation was to retain golf at this site.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any additional questions on item 43? Alder Curry.
I just thought possibly someone would like to know, it's being reduced from 36 holes to 18.
Thank you. I'm not a golfer. I knew there was numbers attached, but I didn't know what they were. All right, so on item 43, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item 43. We have already dispensed with item 49. So that will take us to item 69. Item 69 is Legisstar 78172, a substitute supporting and approving the city of Madison's application to the U.S. Department of Transportation by the Vision Zero Team for Safe Streets and Roads for All Implementation Grant, supporting the acceptance of that grant should we be awarded it, and authorizing the mayor and clerk to execute a grant agreement with U.S. DOT if awarded. On item 69, President Curry, a motion, please.
Move to approve.
Moved and seconded to adopt. On item 69, Alder Slack.
Yes, I sent around an email to everyone with two proposed amendments. Do I need to make a motion one at a time on those?
No, you can make it all as one.
Okay, so I'm, I move to pass the, the two amendments that I sent around, and I'm happy to explain them.
Do you need a second?
Yeah.
So Alder's Slack motion is to amend the resolution with the language that is in your email, and Alder, feel the second. And Alder Slack, would you like to speak to the amendments?
Sure, I'll, I'll try to be just quick and hopefully this won't be too controversial. So of course I support this grant proposal. I, I read the grant thoroughly. I've talked with the, the staff that are working on it. I've consulted with Attorney Haas, and these things that I'm calling out in Amendment One, encouraging, encouraging a focus on evaluation, impact evaluation, as well as a focus on nature-based stormwater solutions wherever staff deems it's feasible and within the scope of the proposal. So not changing their plans. I don't know the, the plans. I don't know what the projects are, but in conversations with them, there was alignment around, this is something that they are willing to do, and they helped me with the wording to make sure it was something they were comfortable with.
Thank you, Alder Slack. So what's before us now is Alder Slack's amended language. Is there any question about where that language falls or what it is? All right, seeing none, is there any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing no further discussion on the amendment, is there any objection to adopting, to a unanimous vote, adopting the amendment? Seeing no objection, the amendment is adopted, and we're back to the underlying motion, which is to adopt the substitute as amended. Everybody with me? Okay. Is there any discussion? Alder Rumel.
I just want to appreciate Alder Slack for following up with her concerns and making something that seems quite very basic and will provide us info as we go forward.
Thank you, Alder Rumel. No other Alders in the queue wishing to speak. So on the substitute as amended, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item 69 as amended. And we'll go on to item 84. I will note that item 84 is under the introduction of new business for referral without debate. So the only items that we can talk about are the referrals on 84. And so on item 84, Alder Curry, motion to introduce. It's been introduced, well, no, we, because we pulled it off the consent agenda. So we need to introduce it and refer it. So a motion to introduce and refer, Alder Curry.
Motion to introduce and re-refer.
There's a second. So the base referrals are to PCOB on 622 and back to the common counsel on 81. On item 84, are there questions or is there discussion? Alder Miazze.
Yes, I just wanted to say a few things here. First, I wanted to bring everybody's attention to, on June 13th, on 2023, we all received an email from Attorney Haas telling us that his office has completed the proposal.
Alder, there's no discussion on the item. It, the only item, the only discussion that's appropriate at this point is on referrals.
Yes. So what I'm trying to get to is that we already, in the resolution, it gives us direction. And the direction that it gives us is to, what the resolution says, it says, in receipt of the report, the common counsel, we refer to the Madison Civilian Oversight Board and independent monitor for thorough review of the report to access, to assess it. So after talking to Attorney Haas, the civilian oversight board is meeting this Thursday and will be taking up this item already. So to actually wait until the 27th for it to have another discussion, it doesn't make any sense. So what I'm proposing is that we keep the regular schedule, which the resolution talks about having it reduced today and actually on the 11th, being brought back to council. It's already going to meet on the, on this Thursday.
Yeah, Alder, what's before us right now is a referral to PCOB on the 22nd. And, and then back to council on August 1st.
So my question is, why, why do we need to have them look at it twice?
We're, we're not having them look at it twice, Alder. This, this Thursday is the 22nd.
Where does, I'm sorry. Where does it?
So the, the current motion is to refer to PCOB on 622 and back to the common counsel on 81. Is there further questions or discussion? Alder Miazze.
I'm still confused on why we can't take this item up on the 7/11, the next.
Alder, do you wish to make a motion?
Yes.
What motion would you like to make, Alder?
So the motion I would like to make is that the current, item number 84, to actually be voted on, on 7/11, which is within the resolution, it's a suggested date.
So Alder Miazze moves to have item 84 returned to the council on July 11th instead of August 1st. Is there a second? Alder Harrington McKinney will second. Is there any discussion? So the, Alder Miazze is proposing to amend the motion to bring this back to the council on July 11th instead of August 1st. It will go to the Police Civilian Oversight Board on 622. Oh, good Lord. This is really not the thing we need to be talking about, folks. Alder Evers.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm curious, two Alders apparently pulled this because they wanted to add to other, add referrals, and I haven't heard what referrals they wanted to add.
Oh, Alder, your colleagues have not.
Spoken up, okay.
Had not rung in.
All right.
Alder Evers, thank you very much. Alder Harrington McKinney.
I'd like to be added as a sponsor for 84. I think I already did it, but if I didn't.
You did, Alder, thank you.
Thank you.
Alder Govindarajan.
Hi, sorry. Having troubles just forming words, which is the hesitation. So I, the additional referral, I believe there's a typo. It's supposed to be Alder Duncan and I would like to make is a referral to the Public Safety Review Committee on July 12th and then keep, keep everything else. So basically, it would be the PCOP on the 22nd in two days, and then it would be the Public Safety Review Committee on July 12th, and then common counsel on August 1st would be the motion.
Okay, we can't get that far down, so I'm going to ask Grace, because I think we might be able to settle this. Is there any objection to taking up Alder Govindarajan's motion and coming back to Alder Miazze's question? So the, folks, the question is, thank you, Alder Govindarajan, for weighing in and actually proposing. The question is, do you want it to go to PSRC or not? If it goes to PSRC, it has to go on July 12th, which means that it will not be back at council on July 11th. It would have to come back to council on 81. So the question is, do you want it to go to PSRC or not? If you don't want it to go to PSRC, then it is obvious that it should come back to council on the 11th. If you do want it to go to PSRC, it can't. So the fundamental question is what Alder Govindarajan has put before us. So is there objection to just dealing with that since none of us are tracking particularly well at this hour?
If I could just.
Alder Latimer-Burris, I do see you, but you're not first in the queue. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will not be supporting that this goes to PSRC. It has been to that body. It has been well discussed. I was on that committee when it went to the Public Safety Review Committee, so I will not be supporting the referral back to the Public Safety Review Committee.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer-Burris.
Sorry about that, Mayor. I only have one question, and, and that question is, why, why does, I haven't heard why it needs to continue to circulate.
Thank you, Alder. If your colleagues wish to address the reason for the motion, they're, they're welcome to do so. Alder Bennett.
Yes, I mean, I, I was wondering if my colleagues that made the referral, like you said, would want to speak to the, their motion. I would like to also speak to the motion after they speak the motion.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Miazze.
I know a lot of new Alders haven't really, they just got on board, but we've had an in-depth conversation at the Public Safety Review Committee, like my colleague already said. And also, too, the resolution that was sent out, like I said before, on the 13th, addressed that, like I just read, that the common counsel should send it to the COB already, to an independent monitor. So we are following direction of the resolution. So I know that new Alders just got on board, but this is something since 2015, and we need to keep on moving forward rather than delaying this topic that's been long overweighted. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Duncan.
So I think the reason that I was looking at wanting this to go back, well, be referred to the Public Safety Review Committee, was with the report that was provided, I did not know if the Public Safety Review Committee has already looked at Chief Barnes's report and given any type of feedback with regards to the report. So that's why I was wanting it to go back to them. So I don't know if that has occurred, but that is the reasoning of why I was wanting it to go back.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett.
Yes, well, I want, you know, I will agree with my colleague to the right of me that it's important for the Public Safety Review Committee to look over the recommendations. This is quite literally why we did a pilot, to receive feedback and to review it. Like, the Public Safety Review Committee, wow, it's almost like it's in the name. So it makes sense to refer it to that committee and have it come back. Quite frankly, I think that our August return date is too soon. You know, given the fact that we, this report is just now coming out and we need to digest it, and we now already know constituents want to weigh in on it, I appreciate the angst. However, I don't believe that we need to proceed with haste as, you know, one to two months is not going to make too much of a difference.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind my colleagues that referring it to PSRC is not to debate whether or not to have a pilot. The question before us are whether the draft provided by Chief Barnes is consistent and compliant with the final report of the feasibility committee. That's the issue here, and that's what we would be voting on as a council. It's not to debate body-worn cameras or discuss it or whether we should have a, a pilot. It's whether the draft prepared by the chief and the, and the report, the memo provided by the city attorney provides enough basis for us to move forward with the pilot. So I think having more eyes on that and having more discussion, it's a matter of three weeks. It's not trying to delay or stop the pilot. I'm very much in favor of the pilot moving forward, but I will be voting in favor of this referral to PSRC because I think that discussion's important. The question of whether or not the draft provided by Chief Barnes passes muster is a critical issue for us to decide as a body before we move forward with the pilot.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Conklin.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I will be supporting the referral to go to the PSRC. I think, like we have stated already earlier, there are new people on the committee. I think it's only fair for them to have a fair chance to look at it, digest, speak about it, ask questions. And I, I think the timeline with the referral to the CPOD on, or B, excuse me, C, PCOB, excuse me, on the 22nd, and then the. PCOB, excuse me, on the 22nd, and then the PSRC on the 12th of July, and then for it to come back on August 1st is a great timeline. And I will be hoping that the rest of my colleagues will be supporting this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. And my apologies to the body. I have not been tracking how many times people have spoke. But Alder Harrington McKinney, I think this is the second time.
This is the second time, and you've been offering grace all night. So, but this is my second time. I will not be supporting the referral to the Public Safety and Review Committee. And the reason that I'm not going to be supporting it is that we have had this discussion about the Public Safety Review Committee. It has gone through, gone to the Public Safety Review Committee. It has been reviewed by the Public Safety Review Committee. And it is now being referred to the PCOB. And there is a duplicate process that they will be almost duplicating the discussion, I'm sure. This is time to move forward. The PCOB is designed to go through and make those questions and make those determinations, which I'm thoroughly sure that they will be doing. And to have it to go to Public Safety Review and also the PCOB is duplicative. And so I will not be supporting the referral back to Public Safety Review Committee.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Miyazze, possibly for the second time?
I just wanted to reiterate what my colleague said. As far as saying that to review the body camera pilot, the pilot has not started yet. But let me just read what our resolution that we passed said. Be it finally resolved that upon the said report of the common council, will be referred the report to the Madison Civilian Oversight Board and independent monitor for thorough review of the report. This is something that we agreed to, something that's already going to come to fruition on Thursday. So I don't understand. I know my colleague said that the report needs to be reviewed. So it is going to be reviewed this coming Thursday, and that's the reason why it's being sent there. So I, this is something we all agreed to. So I'm a little bit confused on why we're delaying the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer Burris for the second time.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to say, and I'm one of the new Alders, but this issue came up pretty extensively in District 12, which has spoken to body cams. And I think, you know, it's affected in part with the pilot. It has, we're not, it doesn't appear that we're acting in haste. I don't think eight years is in haste. And I imagine that Dr. Barnes, you know, prepared the report accordingly. So, you know, I trust that he, Dr. Barnes, knows what, you know, what's at stake, is in policing. It came to the city aware of the situation. So I kind of want to ask the other question, my other question that I just kind of want to back end on it as well, is to say, is this, with it going on Thursday, I mean, is that enough of a process? Does it, do we need to have more processes? Do we, do we think that we need to vet his report again and again and again? I mean, sometimes we accept staff reports that they recommend because they're the experts. And when you trust that, then you're like, okay, it's not every, it's maybe not how I'd want the vote to go, but I trust the experts. So I'm wondering if we need to vet and vet and vet and vet. And when I say that, I'm saying, you know, vet, vetting.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Madison.
Oh, my bad. It's been a long night. I need more coffee. But this is absolutely, I think, my first time speaking on this. All right. So I just want to speak as a new Alder despite being appointed in October. But I do think, again, I'm going to go back to what I hope guides most of us, but it absolutely guides me. So our mission, the city's mission, is to provide the highest quality service for the common good of our residents and visitors. For me, I read that as I am supposed to hold myself accountable to the folks who elected me. A portion of my district in 17 is represented by the North District. And so being a new Alder, I absolutely do want to see it referred to these two committees because it's also me doing my due diligence to inform myself and do the work I need to do in order to make the best decisions. And then it also sort of gets to something earlier where we're asking staff to answer questions for us or not, or be available to answer questions for us or not answer questions for us when we didn't have any to be answered. I have a lot of questions to be answered. And I think going to those two committees will help me flesh some things out along with meeting with Chief Barnes and Captain Donahue outside of this space. So for me, again, I am going to support it being referred to those two bodies because as an elected official, I am supposed to hold myself to accountable to my, the folks who elected me. And I think having them refer to these two bodies sort of gets us to our mission of providing the highest quality service for the common good of our residents and visitors. And July 11th through August 1st is like this. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Curry.
Thank you, Mayor. I hate that I'm spending time to say this, but I feel like it is important to clear up misinformation. So with the quick check of Legisstar, I looked at the Public Safety Review Committee. It has met, or has had six meetings on calendar since the beginning of 2023, two of which have been canceled, the most recent being June 14th. And none of those agendas show that the PSRC has met and reviewed the pilot implementation program that is before us. So I want to clear up. It's been discussed, but I think we're talking about earlier iterations that some of us were here for when we approved the budgetary. We approved the money to make this happen in last budget cycle. So we, it's not signed, sealed, and delivered. And I think that is what Alder Madison just pointed out of our due diligence. And also, I just want to remind us that this was, I think, almost 16 months ago when we made that decision to approve the funding. So I don't feel that there's haste in that. So I think that we should take our time and due diligence and make sure that we and our constituents know exactly what we are voting to implement. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak. So just to be clear about what's before us, we are voting on referral to PSRC on July 12th. All those in favor of referral, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called. And the clerk will please call the roll.
Alder Field? No. Figueroa Cole? Aye. Govindarajan? We'll go back to you. Harrington McKinney? No. Knox? No. Latimer Burris?
No.
No. Madison?
Yes.
Aye. Martinez Rutherford?
Yes.
Aye. Miyazze? No. Rumel?
Aye.
Aye. Slack? No. Tischler? No. Verveer?
Aye.
Aye. Vitterver? No. Wajalia? Oh, sorry, Wajalia is excused. Bennett? Aye. Conklin?
Yes.
Aye. Curry? Aye. Duncan? Aye. Evers? Aye. And Alder Govindarajan? Aye. 11 ayes and 8 noes.
11 ayes. That amendment passes. So now what's before us is introduction, referral to PCOB on 622, PSRC on 712, back to council on 81. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of introduction and those referrals? Alder Harrington McKinney wishes to be marked voting no. With that exception, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor. Okay, just to be clear, the vote is on introduction of the item with those referrals. It's not a vote on the referrals. The vote is to introduce the item with those referrals. That vote's already been taken, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney will be recorded as voting no. And with no other objection, we'll record a vote in favor and that item is introduced. Alder Field is going to jump the gun and.
Move adjournment.
It's moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adjournment? Seeing no exception, we are adjourned. Have a good night.